...are different views, different ways of expression, different emotional intensities, and different roads to lead to conclusions. May we combine clarity of mind with kindness of heart, and may we be impartial without bending to strong personalities? May we sacrifice self-interest for the good of the whole? May we do our love and clarity of vision for the benefit of those we represent? Please be seated.
So I'd like to call the regular meeting of April 18th to order, and I would ask Ms. Robertson if we have any additional late items.
Your worship, we have three. There's a letter dated April 15th from Gail Ludvigsen at number 304-275 First Street citing concerns with the parking variance for DVP 2016-01, and this will be considered in conjunction with the staff report's item 8.1. It's also been circulated to each council member and members of the audience. There's also a recommendation from the Advisory Design Panel that met earlier today, and that's for Development Permit 2014-14 for 15 Canada Avenue, and that's to be considered under Staff Report Item 8.3. And also a recommendation from the Advisory Design Panel regarding Development Permit 2016-06 for 1344 Street, and that is to be considered under Staff Report Item 8.5.
And those are included on the same document?
Been circulated separately.
Yes, and but both recommendations are on the same document.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, with those things added into the existing agenda items, I'd call for a motion to approve the agenda circulated, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we go to item four on the agenda, which is the adoption of minutes. We have the minutes of the March 21st council meeting and a motion to adopt. Moved, seconded, thank you. Any errors or omissions? Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And we move to the April 4th, 2016 Committee of Whole Minutes and a motion for adoption. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And carries. So we move on to delegations this evening. We have our first delegation, and I believe he's here. Thank you. We have Staff Sergeant Adrian Marsden from the RCMP giving his first quarter 2016 update. Welcome, Adrian. And thank you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor Councilors, thank you for stopping me to speak to you, placing in our community tonight. Inspector Harper Tan wanted me to apologize for last minute personal emergency attention, but he did provide me speaking notes.
So we're just having a slight technical difficulty to make sure we can pick you up for, it's not for the audience here, but for the, for the video stream, live video stream, so people can hear.
So we've started the year off with another significant increase in calls for service in the first three months of 2016. In 2015, we saw an increase in calls for service of over 1,000 additional calls over the entire year. In the first three months of 2016, we received 4,363 calls for service, up 3,712 calls in the same quarter over last year. This is an increase of 650 calls in the first quarter, a significant increase over the past years. Our drive for public awareness to call the police to report suspicious activity, along with the increased number of block watch participants, may have had an impact. While we're very pleased to have more calls coming in, we are at this, at the point where we need to look at the existing resources to determine if more police officers are required. We are managing staffing levels at the present time, as medical issues for some staff have impacted manpower, leaving us shorthanded. Our minimum staffing levels for officer safety are no less than five officers in uniforms scheduled for duty on any given day. We are expecting five new members to arrive now, between now and August, including two new cadets from our training center. An overview of our annual performance plan. I'll touch briefly on each of the initiatives that are currently in our annual performance plan, first being the prolific offender management program. This continues to be an effective crime reduction strategy that moves the key to reforming behavior back into the hands of individual offenders documenting or assisting to help them get back on track. We are monitoring offenders who have been released on probation in order to ensure they are abiding by court-imposed conditions, such as curfews. In cooperation with community probation, we assist offenders upon their release to try and keep them from reoffending in the future. Traffic safety. Our municipal traffic unit, which consists of three members funded by the municipality of North Cowichin, provided a significant increase, increased presence and visibility in the area this year. We're working to reduce injury and fatality collisions in the area by focusing our attention on high-risk areas. As this unit is funded by the municipality of Cowichin, these resources are directed to focus the majority of their attention towards high-risk areas on the trans-Canada highway, as well as within municipal boundaries. The NIMMO Integrated Road Safety Unit also provides traffic service on the provincial highways. Their work is noted in the table on page nine of the report, and while it does not break down any specific zones they worked in, it's notable that they had 75 contacts in our detachment area this fiscal year. We'll continue to focus on distracted driving for the balance of the year, encouraging members of the monitoring public to put their phones away while driving. Police Community Relations and Visibility. Our initiatives towards visibility during the summer were oriented around foot patrols and the bar watch program. While we continue all year long with these programs, we've increased our visibility in school zones to raise awareness of the 30-kilometer zones in these areas. These patrols have largely been visibility-based, reminding people to slow down. Domestic violence. The emergency of a formal integrated case assessment team, or ICAT, has brought about a strong focus and collaborative effort to reducing instances of domestic violence. The collaboration between the police and community support services is value-added as we work hard to reduce instances of domestic violence. Statistics. As I mentioned, we responded to 4,363 calls and an increase of 650 additional calls from 2015. The list of calls for service indicates the incident described to our dispatchers at the time of the call. Of course, once we arrive and assess and manage the actual call, a more accurate depiction of the file is provided. The statistical portion of the report is intended to give you an idea of the types of calls we get from the public in terms of frequency of volume. Based on this number, we appear to be headed for a file count in excess of 18,000 calls this calendar year. We've seen a steady increase in calls for service for the past four years. 2015 was 15,500, 2013 was 15,700, 14 was 16,300, and 2015 was 17,500. And lastly, is the General Duty Staffing Analysis Committee, or what we call the GD SAC. We are well into the deployment of the General Duty Staffing Analysis at this time. In this process, we look closely at what calls for service we receive, where they come from, and what, and at what time of day. Additionally, we look at the time spent responding to these calls and following up with documentation to gather an accurate picture of what we do, where we do it, and how long it takes to complete the investigations. I am looking to ensure appropriate response time to priority calls. I am also looking to see how much of the officer's time is free from investigations. This is time that they could spend doing foot patrols, bar walks, school zones, and school-related issues. Our expectation is to be able to draw data from this process this summer. That will ensure that we are maximizing our resources in the most efficient manner possible. We will have a very accurate understanding of how many police officers it takes to conduct business in any specific area of our boundaries, be it the city of Duncan, North Cowichin, Cowichin tribes, or the CVRD. And we will be closely examining our shift schedules to ensure we are using our existing resources in the most efficient manner possible. And that completes the report, and I can try to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Staff Sergeant. I have a few questions, and I'll put them to any council. One of the questions, and you alluded to an answer possibly right off the top of your report with respect to the fact that there were more calls, and I'm looking more specifically at theft under 5,000 and mischief of property, and there's many areas in that, in that first quarter that are up. So is there any way that you would be able to quantify somehow the calls for, whether the calls for service are being generated through community policing efforts and things like that? Because you did mention block watch and, and people just being more aware, not that there's more incidents necessarily, but it's being reported more regularly. Is there a way to quantify that somehow in the future?
I don't know if there's ever an exact answer. I mean, they're always going to fluctuate a little bit, and different times of year are going to change. But so we definitely-
But these, these are statistically significant at this point.
Yeah, 100%. But, and though, I think those were Inspector Carver and his best speculations, was maybe an increase in block watch and, and just encouraging more reports.
And I know that is, that is the detachment's goal, is they want people to report. They don't want people just to simply ignore activity. So, and with respect to the, that mischief for property and the theft under 5,000, are any of those identified under the prolific offender program, or?
They would be. I mean, each offender will oftentimes be responsible.
I was just kind of alluding, have there been some releases, or other things that have happened with, you know, repeat offenders that might be spiking some of these statistics because they're out from the system at this point, or?
I don't know if there's been, I wouldn't put it to, to those offenders. There's, I would, I wouldn't say that they're, I'm not sure I can put a finger on exactly what's causing an increase in calls, to be honest.
Okay, at this point in time, okay. And so hopefully in the next quarter, we either see a reduction or something else happens, okay, if there's some arrests. Okay, so that, that was one question. The other with respect to the, the bike patrol and those kind of things, is that, is, is that going to be followed up with the same, similar program as last year, and?
I'm sure it would be. Like, I know that Inspector Carver is big on the visibility when the summer rolls around with the tourism and everything. It's definitely, I haven't heard it from him officially, but I can almost guarantee, knowing him, that I will have more bike patrols and people in the streets in the summer.
And obviously, resources have an impact on that, too, so. And I believe, one thing I would like to pass along to Inspector Carver and Tan is the, the assistance that they provided with some issues that we had here in the downtown core over the last couple of months, and he was very directly involved in that, and that was very much appreciated, and helped a situation now, which hopefully is resolved. So that's much appreciated, and I want to pass that along.
Great.
Okay, any other on the council who would like to ask questions? Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, your worship. Just some information on the NIMMO unit. Have they always been coming down and providing assistance, or has it just always been the South Island Integrated Unit?
If we have a file that crosses paths, we, it's common to work together. Yeah, we've had, a lot of things will cross over. A lot of, we'll have like B and E suspects that will cross into different areas, so our teams will work together. We'll have, you know, mail thefts will occur, crossing into different jurisdictions, so, especially with the plainclothes units, we'll often work together with the teams if we can. A lot of times, we're going for the same targets, quite honestly, so it's worth our while to put resources together to tackle the same person. Yeah. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Staples, and then Counselor Bruce. Oh, it wasn't you? Okay, Counselor Bruce, please.
I know the RCMP are very busy. There seems to be a lot of tagging and graffiti going around town. Do you have any information on that?
You know, I know that that's been a big issue this week, actually, and I know that there, I was seeing emails flying through our office this week, just trying to work out some sort of a program, and I think that's something we can, I could probably speak to in the next meeting, but I, I think that's an ongoing thing that, I think they're trying to work on initiative as we speak, actually, on that.
We had kind of a, I wouldn't call it a task force, but there was a collaborative effort to, to deal with the anti-graffiti program, and, and we actually had a very successful one. In fact, it was so successful that they, they couldn't actually subscribe the money that they had to support it. So we're obviously going through a, a new rash, and so it's up to the police to identify, or help to identify those issues, but I think the program is being revisited again to make sure that it's continued to be effective, because it was effective in the past. So those people have come back together to talk about it, community policing in North Cowichin, Parks, and, and the city staff, so. So thanks so much for your presentation, so it was interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have our second delegation this evening is Marilyn Kills, and this is regarding the development variance permit for 272nd Street. Ms. Kills here. If you'd just introduce yourself at the microphone and where you live, not your specific address, but, you know, what street? And-
My name is actually Marilyn Clies, K-L-I-Z-S. And I live at the end of First Street.
Great. Okay. Yes, please.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm speaking on behalf of the condo owners of 275 and 245 First Street, read the variance permit application for 272nd Street. Our neighborhood, our, sorry, our First Street complexes are unique in our neighborhood as we have both street and lane access to parking. Because of the location of the development of 272nd Street, the residents of 275 will be most affected, but we share the same concerns with both buildings, mainly access and safety. Safety is our most important issue, but I'm going to address access first because it explains safety. The residents of 272nd Street will have only two choices for access exit from their property the way the parking is going to be done, down a stretch of lane to Jubilee, and some of that lane is not wide enough for two cars to pass. And the other access for them is a quick shortcut through our parking lots. It is a tempting quick exit access. Even though it's private property, we already have a problem with people using our driveway. We have quite a large distance between the two parking areas, and it's being used already, also by other vehicles. During the Second Street construction, vehicle access to the site must be limited to either the laneway or Second Street, and the temptation, if you look at the drawings, is to use our driveway as access, and sometimes the 245 driveway as well. We have had two previous examples of this happening, when that house burnt down at 245. The big cat came in through our parking lot. We still have gouges on the pavement from when it went through to knock down the burning building, and most recently, 245 has had actually a city vehicle go through there and actually damaged part of their building. Second concern, and our most important concern, is the safety of our residents. We have a lot of residents in both buildings who are seniors. I've worked with seniors all my life. This is no, no way ageism, but we're all, we're all aging, and we have to walk down a driveway to the front entrance of our building, or down the alley to access back doors. Many of our residents have mobility issues and require walkers, wheelchairs, canes, and maybe carrying groceries, et cetera, or pushing shopping carts. Many have sight and hearing issues. Using our driveway as access and, and a general increase in traffic will increase the risk to our residents. I'm almost finished.
That's fine.
What we're really asking the council to do is have a serious look at our safety issues and to consider the relocation of the parking area for 271st Street. No, it might not be that aesthetic to put it in the front, be in front of the building, but I think it would be really, really safer. There's been suggestions of putting private property signage, but I don't believe this will protect us. People ignore private property signage all the time, and to effectively block access to either end of our driveways would be difficult and costly and actually almost impossible. The possible ramifications of approval of development of this variance permit is that there could be a serious accident, and it really is a time to decide now for the safety of the residents of our buildings, rather than wait till an accident occurs. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'll just, council may have some questions for you, so if we entertain those, that'd be great. Is there any questions from council on this?
Yep.
Roger, or Counselor Bruce?
Have, have you looked at any speed bumps for your parking lot?
We haven't looked at that, but you might remember, there are speed bumps on First Street, but some sort of regulations say they have to be very gradual, and a lot of the younger people driving to the park just use it as a way to get air. But I don't know if, I don't know if we could have bigger speed bumps in our parking area. That would be our expense, though, wouldn't it?
Could be, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Counselor Jackson?
I do have some comments, but I'll wait till-
Yeah, I believe those would be for the, for the things, just questions for you. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for coming. Okay. So we move on to item six on the agenda, which is Rise and Report, and this is item 6.1, and a following recommendation passed from a special closed council meeting, that the County Valley Historical Society representative on the Totem Subcommittee, and the Cowichin Green Committee CGC representative on the Environment Committee be reinstated as voting members on the committees. Okay? Yeah, it's just, we're reporting out, so that's just yet. So it's, it's not, it's something to vote again, we've already done that. Okay. I would refer to your pages on things, but I, I see that they're not here on the agenda, so they're missing for me. So if you can't find something, I may not be able to help. All right. So we move to a report of the chief administrative officer, and Mr. Dervitite.
Thank you, your worship. I'll just, excuse me, touch on a few points on there, if you have council questions on the other matters, feel free to ask me. The residential water metering, phase one is essentially complete, and phase two has commenced in March and is actually progressing quite well. We're just actually trying to keep ahead of the contractor by locating each service, all the residential services as they move ahead, so we're, seem to be keeping up well. The annual flushing program this year with chlorination, so the, the system-wide annual flushing program is beginning today, actually. Notices and frequently asked questions were bulk mailed through Canada Post to all users on the city system last week, and notices were in last week's paper, as well as on the city's website to advise of this change. You know, this will be the first year that the city's chlorinated now that we have the emergency chlorination system, so we'll be able to chlorinate, much like all municipalities do during water main flushing programs, but we have no intention of chlorinating on a regular basis. The Second Street Capital Project, notices were sent out last week as well to area residents and property owners on Second Street advising of the scope and details of the project. Request for quotations is actually going out today and closing on May 13th for that Junior council has set their dates for their Committee of Whole meeting on April 26th, and their council meeting is May 24th. I'll let other members of council speak to junior council's recent attendance at the AVICC, which I understand went quite well. And maybe the last one I'll touch on is the year-end audit. The auditors will be presenting their report and draft financial statements to the May 2nd Committee of Whole meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So questions of the CEO, it can be held at the question period at the end of the meeting. So we move to Development Variance Permit 2016-01-272nd Street. The additional correspondence is on your table as well. It was added as the added item. This is the correspondence from, who's it from? From Gail Ludvigsen, yes? So that's there as well. So this is quite a long recommendation, so I'll try to read it out as efficiently as I can. And did staff want to report on, on this variance before council deliberates? Yeah, okay. So it says, "Subject to consideration of public feedback, the council approved development variance permit, DVP 2016-01, as attached to the April 18th, 2016 report of the manager of planning, for the purpose of developing a two-story building with four dwelling units at 272nd Street, to permit the following: setback variances to vary section 7.5B of the zoning bylaw number 1540 for the portions of the development shown in the attachment to the May 7th, 2016 report of the planner; to vary the front setback from 7.45 meters to 4.6 meters for the proposed building; and to vary the interior side setback from 3 meters to 2.3 meters for the proposed building; parking variance to vary section 4.5C of the off-street parking and loading bylaw, to permit parking spaces to be proposed development to gain access, direct access to the highway, or from a highway, in which is the lane that we're speaking of; and that DVP 2016-01 contain the following conditions to be met prior to the issuance of the building for the proposed development: provision of a security deposit in the amount of 125% of the estimated cost of off-street, off-site improvements, the sidewalks shown in the schedules, and number two, insulation or provision of a security deposit in the amount of 125% for the estimated cost of a stormwater main along the frontage of 272nd Street and along Second Street to the existing stormwater main in Centennial Park." So that is the motion, and if staff would like to just comment on the report, which was in your agenda.
I just wanted to let you know that I have up here an aerial photo of the, of the development site to show the development in relation to the two buildings that residents have commented from. So, so the development site is on the north side of the lane, behind 275 First Street, and then just further over to the east is 245 First Street. Currently, there are, there are a couple of other properties with access from the lane as well. One of them is a fourplex right here. So I, at the time of writing the report, we had received one of the letters from, from the public, and so I made some comments within my report regarding that. So the variance requested for the parking is in relation to the vehicles in the parking area having direct access to the lane, so that means that they would essentially be backing out onto the lane, but there also is a, I believe it's a three-meter setback between the rear of the parking stalls and the property line, so the cars wouldn't be located right at the lane.
Okay. So I would need a mover for the motion to bring it on the floor, and then you can, of course, pose questions to staff during the deliberations if you like. So it's moved and seconded, so any discussion? Counselor Jackson?
Oh, thank you. This is somewhat problematic, because I do have, I share your concern about, the residents' concern about people using that private property as a throughway. However, the other part of it is, you can't, it would be difficult to deny on, on other property, the privileges of lane access that you yourself enjoy. So if you get to enjoy the lane access, then other people should probably, unless there was some really huge reason why not to, they should be allowed to have lane access, too. I can't see how we could deny that. But I hear you about the private property, so I'm wondering if there couldn't be some bollards, or bollards with a chain, or something like that, that would prevent people from using that as a throughway, which was just my first thought around that. My second request is through you to staff. Why are they paying for snow removal in the lane? And does anybody else pay for snow removal on public property?
I wasn't, until we received the letter, I wasn't actually aware that they were doing that, so I had some discussions with our staff, and there's, particularly with further development along the lane, I don't see a reason why this city, although it might be problematic, we'd have to figure out exactly how we're going to do it, what kind of equipment we have, but there's no reason the city couldn't maintain the lane. It would not be maybe at, at the height of the list, like other lanes within the city would not be top priority, but they, we would get to it at, at some point, like any other residential street.
Right. So I, I saw that one letter from Mr., oh, please, it just disappeared, Mr. Locke, and thinking that, from Centennial Place, that, you know, if they did come onto the lane, that they would have to share the, the cost, and I just think that nobody should be paying-
We would, we would take that on.
Yeah, yeah. Those are the only comments that I, that I had.
Okay, further discussion? Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, your worship. I have to echo Counselor Jackson's comments. You know, the part, the condos and the apartments, they already have access to the, the lane, which is public property, and in fact, this is a dead-end lane, there are no other driveways between the condos and, and the end of the lane, so it's not as if it's a busy lane. I would, I would suggest that if you are concerned about people cutting through your private property, then you should, you should do something to prevent from getting out at the back end, so. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bruce?
Just wondering if staff have talked to the developer about maybe having a couple of parking spots in the front, just to alleviate some of the traffic on the lane, if there was maybe three at the back and two at the front, or in discussion that way?
I can't recall if we talked about it at the beginning, but part of the reason for locating the parking at the rear is, first of all, it's required under the off-street parking bylaw for multifamily development to have parking at the rear, as well as in the development permit area guidelines, so it would- the development permit area guidelines, so it would also increase the amount of impermeable surface in the development as well, so those are their reasons for locating it at the rear.
Okay. Further discussion? Counselor Bruce, again.
If we took two parking lots from the back and put them in the front, wouldn't we have the same amount of land that we could use for, how to determine?
I think you would need to reconfigure the building and the, yeah, then you would need a large crossing of the sidewalk as well for driveway access.
There's not enough room at the front.
I'm just going to, I think we have to probably caution this, but about trying to problem solve on the fly here. If there's concerns with respect to the information that we've had either through correspondence or with the actual variances that are approved here, the option is to refer it back to staff if you feel that more work is necessary to deal with those things, or either approve or not approve these variances, so I'm just cautioning that, you know, trying to actually solve the issue on the fly at this council table is not a productive way to deal with it. Okay? Counselor Jackson?
No, I was just going to say, there's access to the, to the units is down the one side, and there's like a little grassy area in the front, and there is no, there's no room there without completely redesigning the whole building. So it's, so there's landscaping at the front and the access along the east side, I believe, if I recall the design correctly.
Just to go to your variance, part of it is the setback is being varied on the front, so it's going from 7.5 meters, which is generally what the bylaw calls for, to vary it to 4.6 meters, so there would have to be a complete relook at it. So if council's not comfortable with these variances, then, you know, referring it back would be the most appropriate thing, not try to solve the problems and redesign these issues this evening, so. Mr. Dervertite, do you have any comment on that?
Well, the other option, Worship, is if council desires, you could require the developer pay for the bollards that was suggested, or something like that on the neighboring property as, because you are dealing with a variance, we're not talking about just a development permit here, so if you feel that warranted, and the council as a whole agrees that that's something that you want to enter into, or I don't think we're.
Yeah, I'm just not certain that that, I mean, that's something that we're not certain that would be a solution with respect to the, to the other developments that are sharing the lane, so.
You cannot ask the developer to pay for bollards on somebody else's private property. If the configuration of their property is such that there's a throughway, then it has been for the benefit of the people up until now of those units. Now that there's going to be something in the back, it's seen as maybe not so much of a benefit. At that point, it would be up to them to say, okay, we're going to need some bollards here now, or we're going to need some chains and some whatever, but you can't make, you can't approve this development variance permit based on the fact that he's going to buy bollards for somebody else's property. It just doesn't work that way.
I'm, that's essentially what I was trying to point out. We have the variance permit as it's written, we've got, there are some feedback, council's, it's council's prerogative to either approve this as it exists and/or refer it back to staff for further refinement, but I don't think we should be trying to find the solutions right here at this table. So what's your pleasure? It's been moved and seconded, is there further discussion on it? That's, everybody satisfied that? I'm going to call the question in. All those in favor? Opposed? That's motions carried. Okay? Okay, so we move on to development permit 2016-01-270 Second Street. This is with respect to the same development, and this is the development permit portion of it, so subject to council approval of the development permit process, number DVP 2016-01. The council approved development permit, DP 2016-01, as attached to the April 18th report of the manager of planning, for the proposed development of a two-story building for four dwelling units at 270 Second Street. And the DP 2016-01 contain the following conditions to be met prior to the issuance of the building permit development, for the proposed development: one, submission of a stormwater management plan based on the water balance model, best management practices and satisfaction as Director of Public Works and Development Services; and two, the provision of a security deposit of 125% of the proposed hard and soft landscape costs. Is there a mover? Moved? Any seconded? Seconded? Okay, discussion?
My only comment doesn't have anything to do, has less to do with the actual development permit than the quality of the documents we were given to be able to figure out what was going on here. I could barely see them, they were, it's so faint, I can't see.
I just noticed that, it's strange because they show up fine on the computer.
Yeah.
But I noticed that on the iPad, they show up totally different.
Yeah.
So. I don't know if I, Ms. Robertson, do we have a mover and seconder for this? Yeah? Okay, so maybe, maybe Ms. Geno, you could go, just briefly go through the development permit, just a brief one, and then we can have discussion on that. Thank you.
Okay, so this is, this proposal is for the development of a four-unit building, it's two stories, as was mentioned. The, so on the sightline, you can see there is a walkway that's accessed from Second Street that goes along the east side of the building to each of the individual entrances, and then it also links to the parking area at the rear. There's also a private outdoor space access off of each of the units from the ground floor, and these are the elevations, so they show some variation and some articulation between the units. This, in the middle right is the front elevation of how it will appear from Second Street. The right elevation at the bottom here is the appearance from, sorry, the appearance from the west, from the, from the rear of the building, basically, and then these are, the left side is the east side of the development. And then there's some variation in the application of colors and doors, as well as some trim and shapes as well from the building. So there haven't been any changes since this was presented to committee of the whole.
Okay. So any questions of staff on the report? So discussion on the motion? If I'm hearing none, I'm going to call a question on this motion. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So we move to Development Permit Amendment Application, 2014-14-15 Canada Avenue, and this was subject of consideration of feedback from the Advisory Design Panel, and just for procedure or process, would we look at the Advisory Design Panel recommendations before we have this moved and seconded, or should we get the motion on the floor and then?
Either way, Worship, if it's easier that if we introduce and we discuss.
I think, I think appropriately, we should put the application as it stands on the table, and then we can deal with the rest. So this is the council-approved development permit amendment, DP 2014-14-01, as attached to the April 18th, 2016 report of the planner, for the purposes, for the proposed changes to the development of a mixed-use commercial and residential building at 15 Canada Avenue. And is there a mover? Moved? Seconded? Okay, it's on the floor. I guess I would probably have staff go through the changes, and then we would, we also have the benefit of the advisory panel's recommendations today, from today, and I believe we also have a representative from the development here, the architect, and is it, would be appropriate that they could be asked questions if they, if need be? Okay? Thank you.
Okay, so this is a development that was approved last year through a development permit and variances and a rezoning to the property, and since then, in late fall, they applied for an amendment to the development permit, which has been seen twice now by the Advisory Design Panel, so I'll comment more on that in a moment. The main proposed change is that the area that's highlighted in blue on my drawing here, they're proposing not to build it, it was a one-story commercial area, and then what I've highlighted in the fuchsia area is a, was going to be a roof deck that was accessed by a common, a common space for the residents on the, off of the second floor, so this portion of the patio that was going to be part of a roof deck will not be, they're proposing not to build it with their changes. So the total patio area, it's under the approved development permit, would have been almost 29 square meters. With the reduction in area, they're still providing a balcony that will be about 37.5% of the size of the original roof deck. So it'll be almost 11 square meters, so over 100 square feet.
How many, could you repeat that, please? How many square feet?
Eleven, eleven square meters.
10-point square meters, so that's just over 100 square feet. I'm just going to skip to the landscape plan to show some of the other changes. Shows up kind of small once you're all the way back there, but, so with the proposed changes, there'll be this area along the northern property line, instead of the building, will be an area surfaced with pea gravel, and it will have, it will be fenced off with black ornamental fencing in this area, as well as from the parking area. They've also increased the size of the landscaping area in this section and added some islands with potted trees in the surface parking area. They've also moved the bike racks for the commercial portion away from Government Street and added a new landscaped area where they were going to be. So, did you want me to read out the original recommendation from the Advisory Design Panel from January, or it's part of the report?
If you'd like, yes.
So in January, when the Advisory Design Panel met, they had provided the following recommendations: to explore the potential for an outdoor recycling and garbage area in the surface parking area; number two, to explore the potential for an outdoor open space and an amended area for the residents to possibly include seating in a reconfigured surface area, surface parking area with a reduced number of parking spaces; to explore the potential to create a public laneway in the proposed open space along the northern property line; and number four, to remove the invasive plant species from the landscape plan and introduce more native plants; number five, to explore the potential for making the wooden fence more of a feature, possibly as a growing surface, and to include a detailed description of the materials in the next submission; number six, to use the botanical names of plant species in landscape plan instead of common names; and number seven, to invite the applicant's Bill Green consultant to the next meeting so that the panel can discuss ways that the project can achieve additional points. So as a result of those recommendations, the applicant made some revisions to the plan, so they revised the planting list to remove the invasive species and add the botanical names of plants. They made some changes to the concrete area that was at the north end of the parking area and increased the landscaping in that section, instead of just concrete paving and benches. They also reduced the number of surface parking spaces to nine, I mean, from nine to eight, and they moved the bike racks to the north and introduced new planter, as well as they, in their original amendment application, they had proposed a black chain link fence to fence off that area along the northern property line, so they've changed that to a black ornamental metal fence.
So just with respect to the changes here, so that was, that was their comments originally, so the architect's developers provided those changes, and it was reviewed again by the ADP today?
Yeah. So they also provided a response letter that I've included in the first attachment to this report, speaking to some of the reasons why some other changes that the panel recommended weren't made, and the architect presented those to the panel as well today. And so, so basically, the Advisory Design Panel today, in response to some of their recommendations that weren't met, they specifically highlighted three of those, so on the minutes here from today, to acknowledge.
Just so everybody, they do have a copy of it in front of them, so.
Right. So the first one is that there is no new open space amenity area that has been added since the January meetings, so the panel highlighted all of the multifamily development permit area guidelines that relate to providing open space and amenity areas within multifamily development, and would like, would prefer to have seen acknowledgement and further evidence of meeting those guidelines. The second one was the potential to create a public laneway along the northern property line, so they wanted to see that in order to connect, provide pedestrian connectivity from Canada Avenue through to the Wyndham Building. And then the third item was the Bill Green consultant. They wanted to see at least an updated Bill Green checklist. The latest Bill Green checklist that was provided was provided in August for the registration of their project in the Bill Green program, and this is a requirement of the covenant that resulted from the rezoning to meet a minimum of Bill Green's silver.
Which was, which was covered under the regional development permit, so that's not part of the amendment, just with respect to scope?
No, it was, no, it was from the rezoning, not from the development permit or the amendment.
Yeah. Okay, so I just, I would just get some guidance from staff with respect, because we have a representative here, we council like to hear with respect to the, what proposed in the amendment from the architect, and then we can have our discussion, or would you like to just have a discussion and?
I personally would like to respond, I spent a lot of time on this over the weekend, and also comment on the meeting today as well.
Okay, so, Mr. Dervertite, Ms. Robertson, is it appropriate to have the developer present their, what they presented to the ADP, even, and we just have the comments, or would they just simply comment on it if they want to?
I think it would be appropriate for the developer to comment if there's something that Michelle missed in going over what the changes were, or anything like that, if Brian wanted to speak to any of that, and then he's here to answer any questions that council might have.
Okay. Is there anything you would like to point out that hasn't been recovered in the report?
I'll thank you for the opportunity, but I'm here to answer the questions.
Okay, great. Okay, so I have, I guess, Counselor Jackson and Counselor Horgan, and Counselor Staples. Thank you.
There, as was pointed out at the meeting today, there really is no development guidelines for a development like this that has commercial and high-density residential, and it was pointed out that in actual fact, they clash. So what the. So what the design panel was trying to do was apply commercial design guidelines to the commercial part and try and retain some of the high-density residential part to the, to the residents. My huge contention around this is the lack of outdoor amenity space, and I can't believe that you would think, that anybody would think, that 100 square feet is good enough for 85 different families or different, different units. Our bylaw requires active spa, space for active play or passive activity, and the area that used to have the building on it could easily have been turned into that space either at the ground level or coming to some other arrangement of outdoor amenity space, which is something that we actually require. And one hun, a tiny little balcony at the end of a common room is not gonna be anything that's ever going to be used. I, I'm, I'm shocked that anybody would think that that was acceptable. I, I've also been concerned from the get-go that there's no loading zone, so moving in garbage and delivery trucks will be backing in, I gather, like they do at the old Eaton's building, but this is going to be people moving in, moving out, commercial deliveries in and out. It talks about a bio-swell on some of the drawings, but not on all of the drawings. The drawings don't even match, the drawings are all from different times and different parts of the development. So the fact is, this development cannot deal with the runoff water on its, on its own site. There, there is no bio-swell, even though it talks about one. There, there was a huge concern that they had promised that they were gonna build to a Built Green residential. And at that point, I said, that's not enough. I want, I would like to see lead, you guys disagreed with me, so they said, we're gonna do Built Green residential. So the advisory design panel is saying, look, we're looking at your checklist, and it's pretty terrible. You know, there, we would like to talk to your consultant and, and share ways, because these are all high-priced help, design and, and architectural and planning professionals that can come up with ideas about how this building can be made more sustainable and how they can get more green points. Otherwise, they're gonna have to pay $350,000 worth of fines if they don't meet the, the Build Green residential status. So that was my concern, the, the advisory design panel, we're so lucky to have them, they're, they're earnestly trying to find ways and take this as an opportunity to make this a better development. I mean, we've got what we've got, but there's ways that we can do it, in around the whole thing about open space, in around the laneway, which could be, which could be added, and the connectivity. And they came up with such great ideas, and yet, they were met with, over and over and over, just a blank no. I don't consider changing the plant list and fixing the concrete area and the paving and putting a decorative fence as opposed to chain link fence, any kind of response to the few very reasonable things that they asked. So we, as a council, have an opportunity to either stand up for our, our bylaws, our official community plan, our downtown redevelopment guidelines, or we may as well just throw them out the window, because honestly, what they've asked for here is a golden opportunity to make this a better place and a place where people are gonna maybe want to live, and that will increase the value of it, and it will increase the sustainability of it. So I'm not saying, no, 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 tear it down, we're far past that, but I still want it to be the best building it could be, and I think if they're asked to come back and, and work with either the ADP or with staff or with whoever to provide some of these things that have been asked for today, it will be a better. If we just lie down and roll over and show them our tummies, I, I despair. I, I really hope that you will pay attention to the, the things that this council and other councils and our public have put in place and, and listen to this really, really good advice.
Okay, Counsel Horgan?
Yeah, I was about to bite my tongue, to be quite honest, because I have serious concerns about the, the design panel. In my mind, they, this is just my opinion, the credibility issue is a bit of an issue because-
Could you please use your microphone also?
Certainly do.
I'll start again. I was gonna bite my tongue and just let this one go by, but I have a grave concern about the credibility of the design panel, because I'm not sure how many people are on this design panel, is it four or five? But I do know that two of the people that were on, are on this panel were here giving us their opinions that they didn't think the projects should go forth. And now, all of a sudden, they are on the design panel, giving us advice on how this should go and why it shouldn't go, and now we're at loggerheads with the developer. I, I must admit, I do agree with a lot of Counselor Jackson's concerns, but I am, I am reluctant to take to the bank the design panel's recommendations, and I'm gonna leave it at that, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Duncan?
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess first I have a question, does the 100 square feet meet their current requirements for, for the, the space?
There's no specific requirement for-
Your microphone's not on, if you, thank you. Is it? Okay.
There isn't a specific requirement for an amount of space, so it's somewhat subjective, I guess.
So if we don't have a figure in there, this, this meets the requirement?
The whole development permit itself is subjective, so it's up to council to determine whether it meets the guidelines as a whole. We're taking input from staff, the input from the advisory design panel, and make that determination as to whether it's-
Okay, thank you. The, the next point brought up by the design, design panels is proposing to put a laneway to go from a public sidewalk to a private parking lot. I don't understand why we would do that. It's almost like we're inviting people to walk between the two buildings and, and get out their spray cans and vandalize it. It's private property, so why would we put in a laneway to let people walk from sidewalk to private, to private property? And the other thing is, you know, I expressed concerns with the panel concept right from the start for exactly the reasons that we're seeing right now. I said that it would result in further delays for the developer, and we've seen them tied up with this panel now for two or three meetings. I don't think any of this should go back to the design panel, we're the council, we should be able to deal with this stuff here. Now, we shouldn't be sending stuff back and forth to the design panel who really, they shouldn't be involved in this process more than once. We shouldn't keep sending this developer back to them, because as I said at the very beginning of this process, putting this panel in place will result in further developments, which doesn't encourage people to come to Duncan and spend their money.
Okay, I've got Counsel Staples.
So, just a couple of things, just to, for clarification. The, the Wyndham Building has the, the back laneway, so the, the suggestion today was that they actually do connect, and like, we, we do have other laneways on Station Street and other places that do go from parking lot into Main Street, that's actually something common that runs throughout the city, and that, that this one, when you walk in the back, you actually wa, would walk into the back behind to where the Wyndham Building is, to where that, that laneway is, so it doesn't just go into nowhere. So just to clarify that, was discussed today. In, in terms of, the reason that these changes are coming is because of the reasons, or because the developer came and made amendments, so that's why we're seeing this again, and that's why the design panel was, was seeing this again. So I don't think that it's in our best interest to, to put this all in the design panel, because the changes were significant. You know, that's a lot of lost space in terms of public space. Some of those changes that have already made because of the design panel input with the metal fencing compared to the chain link fencing are, are definite improvements, that would not necessarily have gone anywhere had we not gone through that process. So I do think it's a healthy process. And one of the biggest things for me that jumps out that hasn't been, the fact that we don't have with all the changes, that we haven't seen an updated Built Green checklist, that's something that, you know, I wouldn't move further with this simply just because of that, because that's, that was the reason that we, this was required of the rezoning to begin with. So it has to be revisited when those many changes are made to make sure that they're still, they're still following up or living up to green silver. So those are things council needs to be concerned about without even the design panel's input. And further to some of these recommendations, we have this panel, I sit as a liaison to that panel, and while everyone has different communication styles that we all may not agree with or feel comfortable with or like, there is a lot of knowledge at that panel, and there was a lot of good, there's a lot of good ideas and conversation about ways to make this the best that it, that it can be, and while I recognize the developer does not have to listen to every single one of them, there are things that as a council, that, that, as Counsel Jackson says, are, are things that we've already agreed are important to us under our OCP, and, and if we're not following them, then we should throw out the OCP and start again, because this is, there, the, the, these things that have been, that have been commented and pointed out to us are considerations in, in ways that this building is neglecting the standards that we have for the city.
Thank you, I've got Counsel Bruce.
I support the changes to the building. The, the rooftop patio would be a feature for the condo owners, so it might be a little harder for the developer to sell the condos, but if the developer is okay with that, I'm okay with the changes that they've proposed up on the screen so far.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel Bell?
Yeah, so first, there was a comment that there was no actual set amount, but there is a provision here that says, "The provision and location of play and recreation areas should reflect the needs of the anticipated residential population." So that would just require a small amount of common sense to know that 100 square feet, you know, I have a family of four and a dog, so 100 square feet isn't even the size of my kitchen, so let's be realistic. I mean, 100 square feet is not meeting the needs of what we have in our rules, and I know I've said this probably every time a development permit has come forward after the fact and said, "Sorry, we didn't meet any of the regulations, we built a building that we said we were not going to build, it's not the right color, it has things missing, we just paved a parking lot, forgot about the landscaping," and then we're stuck going, "Oh, okay, well, what are we gonna do now?" And almost every single time since I've been on this council, now going on four years, nothing. So it isn't, we can't have an advisory panel to say, "You have, you are experts, we want your opinion," because we are not experts, and then say, "Oh my gosh, these people are annoying, we don't like their opinions." So I, I think that's really, I would never volunteer to be on a panel for the city if we just threw out what you said if we didn't like it, so I, I would be offended by that. So I'm gonna follow what they suggest, I actually agree with what they're saying. I, I think we had so much conversation about this building in the beginning, it passed by a very thin margin, and the fact it's coming back now and we're being asked again to make changes and changes and changes, by the end of the day, it's not gonna be the building that we asked for. So it's not the advisory panel's problem that there's changes, it's the developers, and so, you know, I don't think what they're being asked to do is a lot, and I know it probably costs money to do these things, but they're talking about an area for people to hang out, and, and this is a very small community, and that was one of the things I remembered liking about the building, so I'm not as supportive of the changes.
Okay. Further discussion? I'll put my comments in. There's a lot of issues brought forward here and commented on, I am in support of the advisory design panel process. One thing that we do have, I believe, is a probably a older version of a development procedure bylaw, I think one of the things that we will want to do, and we will be doing with the ADP and the review of our OCP as we go forward, which is in our strategic plan, that we will be updating the guidelines in the development permit areas, I think that's a positive thing, and having the advice and collective expertise of the advisory design panel could and would be helpful in that process. Development procedure bylaw, if it's not up to date, and I think it is probably important that it does become up to date, because I think one of the things here is that we have to develop both certainty with respect to process, so council understands what the process is in, in all cases, and they can refer to the bylaw, but it also provides certainty for developers, so that they could hold council to account with respect to managing their own processes, so it isn't something that's undiscovered at the time, so that we have a clear, with respect to whether amendments or things come back and forth to an advisory design panel and what, in what circumstances they would. So I have spoken to staff, as my role as mayor, to bring good governance, is that we will review our development procedure bylaw and consider updating it to be more responsive to the kinds of developments that I would think we're going to see in the future, because it is a growing area, and I think we'll see more development here, and especially the development with the medium to high density. One of the issues here, I wanted to, I appreciate the, the issue with respect to the design panel's comments on amenity space, and I think, I would think from a, a project standpoint, if, if I were a developer, I would want to make my building as attractive as possible for, for residents to be there. We, we don't have guidelines specifically for, for this zoning, because it is a new zoning that applies to C1. I think we have to look at the specific characteristics of our C1 properties, they're in a downtown core, and, and this building in specific, if we had gone with the original zoning, could have been lot line to lot line with parking exemption, no parking required. It could have been a very different building under the original zoning we had, so we have to consider that. This is a very urban and downtown location, so we might not consider that having play space and parks for kids with respect to play areas would be an appropriate use in a mixed-use building where you have commercial activity and, and residential, residential building. It's gonna appeal to a very specific set of, of clients. We also have public park space in the downtown core, there's a park right across the street, so there's certainly a great place for people to hang out in, in green space if they want to. The amenity space, just want to kind of get to the scope of this, it's private amenity space, so it's not for the public. So the suggestion with respect to the laneway is something that we might want to consider when we go forward in development, that, that is something that we build into the guidelines and talk about public amenity space at, in, under those contexts. I, I, I would be amenable if I was doing it, that I would put that three-meter space in between the building as a private amenity space to, to add to the building, but that really is ultimately a choice of, of the development, and, and ultimately, it will be the owner's strategy that manages that space going forward, so. I, I put those out there because I think it's important that we understand with, with this particular thing, that we're talking about the scope of the amendment, all the other issues with respect to Built Green, parking issues were all dealt with, with the original zoning and development permits, and there's covenants in place to cover those off. The, the, so I, I don't, don't want to comment on them, because those, those were settled in there in the covenants, and the city is protected to make sure that we, that those things are achieved and it's their requirement to do so. So I'll leave my comments at that, and ask maybe if there's any other questions at this point. Counsel Jackson?
At the very least, can we ask them to provide an updated Built Green checklist?
Now, the purpose of that would be really for council, not for the ADP, because it is part of the covenant of the original zoning, so staff will want confirmation that that checklist is up to date and that they're actually going to meet, and they do, I believe. You do have a professional now engaged in specifically making sure that the building meets those standards, okay?
If the building does not meet those standards, how, what is the process to collect the fine?
If the amount, sorry, if, if for one, they don't meet Built Green, which I would expect they will, because they have a consultant and they're, they're moving towards that, if they were to not meet it for some reason, they would have to pay that full amount, which is, I believe, $350,000 prior to receiving occupancy on the building. So none of the tenants-
So they couldn't actually utilize the bill?
So you'd have 35 people who'd purchased homes that wouldn't be allowed to move into it?
No occupancy, so, yeah, I don't-
It's, it's not an incentive for the, for the developer not to meet the, this Built Green standard. I think it would be almost unconceivable that you wouldn't.
For example, that's one, and one of the other developments we have within the city, I won't go into which one that is at the moment, but there is, we are withholding occupancy until everything is completely satisfied, and that- until everything is completely satisfied, and that is proving to provide an incentive for them to complete their last outstanding deficiencies on the building.
Okay. If we go back to the landscape design, I did want to comment positively and with respect to some things that they had changed with respect to the amendment. I do like the approach to moving the bike racks further north and providing landscaped area on the streets, so that will improve the streetscape and won't be just a hard surface right at the corner at the entrance of the building. Can you move it over a little bit?
Sorry.
All right. I think it's zoomed in slightly or something.
It is.
That's fine, that's good enough. You can see it right on the upper left corner, and where the PMT is, and then the bike rack just in, and I believe that's a fence, is it, or some kind of barrier between the landscape PMT and the bike racks?
That's right. It's a configuration of the pencil on the-
Okay. With respect to the bioswale issue and the changes in the landscape, I think the definition of bioswale is, was probably inappropriately applied to the way stormwater management was being dealt with in the first place. So I think it's kind of misleading in terms of, because a natural bioswale, which would be an environmental service, probably could not have been accommodated in that kind of space. It's supposed to mimic basically the natural system service. So this is a more technical approach to providing a place which is sloped towards those planted areas in between the parking spaces and the landscaped area at the back, and then an engineered drainage system underneath that system, which then carries it to storms sewer when it's reached its capacity. I think the area with respect to the north side, where they've added the landscaped area, they've added three trees. So with respect to the attractiveness of it, it would be sort of taking off the backside of a building, which doesn't really have much to describe it as a feature or anything architectural feature, provides some new growth there, more, again, permeable space for stormwater. So as far as that was concerned, that was approved, the stormwater management system, and what they are doing now has to meet that, the specifications, so that I don't think is, I think they've attracted it or changed it enough. There won't be any paving in there, it's all permeable surface. So I just think that's a benefit to the things they have changed. The issue over the amenity space, I think that there could be an approach to do something there. I don't think it has to be anything particularly fancy, but I'm not going to, I don't think I'm going to not go forward with this just to try to get that resolved at this point. I think it's something that maybe the strata will deal with later, but it is considered as a private space, and that is private property, and the alleyways is not at this point. If that's not their interest with respect to their private property, we have nothing to enforce that kind of thing. So those are my comments, and I think Counsel Jackson, you had another comment?
No.
No? Okay. Any other questions, maybe some further questions of the architect, if you have them? Okay, and so is every, all discussions good? So I'm gonna call the question on the amendment, and all in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, thank you. So we move on to item 8.4, Development Permit 201603, 162 Station Street. That council approved Development Permit Number 201603 as attached to the April 18th report of the manager from planning for the purpose of what the Salmon Say mural installation at the rear of 162 Station Street, and that Public Works be directed to assist with the installation of the mural if the mural cannot be installed prior to the end of the Queen Margaret school year. That is a motion. Is there a mover? Mover and seconded? Okay. Just discussion-
Just a question. Wouldn't Public Works have to be involved, whether they were in, more will Public Works have to do?
May I question? Sorry, so the, initially, the Queen Margates and their staff had every intention of installing it themselves. It's on the back of a private building, no need for the city's involvement, but essentially because of the extra step and the input from the public art panel, there was a bit of a delay, as well as they've asked for some public, some professional artist participation, community involvement in the actual construction of the mural. And as a result of that, it's possibly going to delay past the end of the school year, and Queen Margates won't have any staff. The one that was installed on the Phoenix, no, I shouldn't say Phoenix, the station, gone with the Phoenix. It didn't require any Public Works involvement in that particular installation. So if possible, we may, we may not need to have any Public Works involvement, but if it ends past the school year, then we just asking for a council's blessing on giving that support.
This is just here to simply make sure that we are giving approval for them to get involved if-
If we have to, yes.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. So we move to Development Permit 8.5, which is Development Permit 201606, 134 Fourth Street. And it's also a long one, that council, this is options, council either approve the Development Permit Number 201606 as attached to the April 18th report of the manager planning to allow the installation of perforated graphic window coverings on the Unit B, 134 Fourth Street, or other option is to not approve the Development Permit under the same things, and that, I think, is the whole, the whole thing. So what is your pleasure? And there, and just so you know, there is an ADP advisory on this particular item, on your, on the minutes from the ADP. Counsel Duncan?
I think, sure.
I was, I was gonna move number two to not approve.
Okay. Is there a seconded for that? Seconded, okay. Any discussion on that? Counsel Jackson? Everybody? Okay.
Basically, we're trying to open up the windows in Duncan with the vaping shops and bong shops, having closed windows and all of this perforated stuff. It's starting to look like a, part of the city is starting to look pretty unwelcoming, and I would really hope that our newest newspaper would look at a different way of welcoming the public to look in the windows and see what the business is going on there. I just, I really don't like this move to close up the windows.
Okay. Counsel Duncan?
I thank your worship. I speak against denial of the development permit. The reason being is that we, and you've mentioned it already, Counsel Jackson, throughout the city, it's inconsistent, the way that it's being handled right now. There are places where we've actually tried to do something about it and not gotten anywhere. So until it's being consistently taken care of across the city, I don't see why we should turn around and say to the paper, "No, you can't do it," even though there's examples of several places around town that are already doing it. So we are going to review our official community plan, maybe that's the time to deal with this once and for all, but in the meantime, it's sort of like we're zeroing in on the paper and saying, "No, no, you don't get to do it, but all these other places have already done it." So.
Counsel Staples?
Well, it would have been good if all those other places came to council and actually asked first, because we would have had the same answer for them, but they didn't, they just went and did it. And that's what we're dealing with, is trying to go back and have to go after them for not abiding by the sign bylaws. So we need to stick by our sign bylaws, and yes, we do need to deal with that, and I think the sooner the better. And that's a topic that we could and should add to our next committee at the hall, so that we can address it, because you're very right, Counsel Duncan, and I completely understand where you're coming from. For this one, though, we can't approve it based on our existing sign bylaws. It's 25% of the window that can't be seen through, that can be opaque. This is 100% of the window. So there are other ways that this can be addressed, and I'd like to see them addressed that way, and then that is a separate issue that we do need to deal with as a council, and the sooner the better, because there are more and more of these going up.
Okay. I have no one else on speaker list, so Mr. Urta?
I just wanted to point out, item 11.3 on the agenda deals with improving our ability to, with respect to enforcement of just that matter, so.
Counsel Bell?
I agree fully with Counsel Staples that you're speaking to an issue that we have on council that we just talked about with development permits, and now with this, I believe I brought it up in the last council meeting, and we've brought it forward several times. I have no idea why there's a bong shop at the corner that has blacked out windows, and we've discussed this on council. So there's an area that the city is falling short in, and, you know, we keep bringing it forward, but to just say, "Okay, well, I guess we are not gonna follow any of our own rules, and we'll just let everybody do that," isn't the answer. We need to hold people accountable, or else there's no point in having an OCP or rules or bylaws. Why would we bother? So I think that is not a solution, and I appreciate that they've come forward and asked for permission, because it saves them the time of putting it up and then having to remove it. So I plan on sticking to what we've said we're going to do with all these shops, and I will follow up with the staff as to why it's not happening.
Okay. Is there any other further discussion? I'll make comment on this as well. I agree with some of the other comments, and I won't repeat those. The fact that we've had signs put in place before going through the permit process for signage is not an excuse for us to carry on with respect. There's very, very good reasons why that is included in the design guidelines and the OCP with respect to frontages. It's issues of, there's issues of safety, there's issues of presence on the street, it really deadens the street down when you, whether it's a nice mural or not, it doesn't create any lightness to the street, and that's well documented in urban design. So I think the, I will be supporting this motion not to approve it, but I do very much appreciate that the new Duncan Free Press decided to go through the rules and go through the process of seeking approval before they actually did this. And with respect to enforcement, I know there are issues with respect to enforcement, and we have, that's all, the staff is very aware of those issues, and they're doing their best at this point to try to resolve them, so. Okay, so any other questions or? Counsel Urta?
The picture we're looking at there, is that the way it is now?
No, that's, this is what they're proposing.
This is what they're proposing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so further discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call the question. All is in favor? This is of the motion to, just to be clear, to deny, the motion to deny. All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries. Okay? This is a really long agenda. So item 8.6, I do appreciate that we're going through it quite efficiently, so-
Can I recuse myself?
Yes, yes, and could you state your conflict, please?
Yeah, I have a contract with the organization.
Okay. So this is item 8.6 on the agenda. This is the Facility Use Agreement for Kowchun Green Community. That council either, and these are two options, authorize staff to issue a facility use agreement to Kowchun Valley Cooperative Marketplace for their co-op farmer's picnic titled "Meet Your Farmer" in the Charles Way Park on May 19th, including up to 10 co-op vendors with tables intent selling their prude produce. Or council authorized to issue a facility use agreement to Kowchun Valley Market, Kowchun Valley Cooperative Market for the co-op farmer's picnic in Charles Way Park on May 19th, excluding vendors with tables intent selling their wares. So one is, both are to approve the event, one includes vendors, and the other does not. Counsel Bruce?
Does staff have any reasons or any other counselors that we shouldn't approve vendors at this event?
That's a question I'll answer in further discussion. Is there further discussion on this? And, well, we don't have a motion on the floor, so a motion of either or would be useful.
I would like to move including the vendors.
Okay. Okay, that's seconded. Any discussion on this motion, and this is to the event on May 19th, to include up to 10 vendors? Counsel Duncan?
Thank your worship. I'm looking at the little map here, but unfortunately, the way it's displayed on my iPad, right over the food part is notations I can't read. So I'm not sure whether this is a food truck or a food table.
Mr. Urta?
Just tents, as far as I understand what they've described.
It's marked here, food, and then like a-
Oh, that says table, sorry.
Says table?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
These are also, would be members of the co-op, from my understanding. So they're part of the cooperates. Counsel Bell?
I know there's a whole culture with the market and the Saturday market and some of the downtown business restaurants, and so I don't even, I don't even know the politics behind it. I don't want to. So is this gonna be in conflict? Like, if we approve this, and then is there gonna be people that are saying, "What are you doing? Like, that's interfering in our business, and we pay thousands of dollars in taxes, and they're not paying anything, and then we have this." So I'm just wondering, like, are we entering into something here? Because in theory, I look at it going, "Yeah, great, go for it, sounds like fun." But are we gonna, is there something we don't know here? Is this, have the downtown business people approved this? Have the market people been told about this? Does anybody know, or is it just gonna pop up and be a surprise?
I'm going to ask that question.
We were just trying to determine the date. May 19th, I don't believe is a Saturday, so the regular farmer's market isn't, it's not gonna be operating on that day. We were just debating, actually, whether there's any market vendors, normal, that are normal market vendors that are also part of the co-op, and we think there's some, but I couldn't honestly tell you one way versus the other. I don't anticipate that there's any big problem with this, other than, as mentioned in the report, our policy essentially is that, you know, uses in a tent are not permitted. The market and the summer festival events are kind of exceptions to that rule, and although staff can approve a facility use permit, given this being vending in a tent and not just, say, some community event where they might use a tent, felt it best to make sure council was on side with that before approving such a use.
Okay.
May 19th is a Thursday.
Okay, with respect to this, I mean, we're obviously, they are wanting the space for that one day for its visibility and their, and the members of the co-op, so I guess my only concern would be, is it an assistance to business particularly? So, and I'm not against it, being a one-day event, I think it's pretty, you know, not going to be an issue with respect to its competition or any things like that with the existing marks are down, so on and so on. I'm not concerned about that. So I'm in favor of approving it, as we've said, being a one-day thing, but I should think we should probably go back to look at policy with respect to is, when we're accepting policy, like when we're not going to follow policy, and such as we do with summer festival and others, that that should be a specific part of anything like event that we do here. That should be a specific part of the approval, that we are choosing to accept the policy or make an exception to the policy, whether it's for a one-day event or for something larger, which would be more negotiated, so. Okay? Counsel Bruce?
One last question comes to mind, is the CGC charging the vendors to be there? Are they making money by having the vendors there at downtown Duncan?
I'm not sure. It's actually not a CGC venture, that's, it's one of their sub-organizations, which is the Kowchun Valley Cooperative Marketplace. So they've established a number of-
Social enterprises.
Sub-social enterprises, subsidiary sort of organizations, such as their Food Save Program and things like that operate, what's the other one? Series, edible landscaping, or different ventures that they operate through sub-organizations, if you want to call it that. I don't, I'm not sure whether they're charging them or not. With respect to assistance to business, this is a facility use agreement with a nonprofit, so you're, okay, it's much like when we provide the use to, a space to the market itself on the street, they charge their vendors.
I just wanted some clarity there, because co-ops, in my view, I've been part of them and developed some over my previous history, and they are very, very large businesses, just so you know. Counsel Bell?
I see that we do have a pretty clear policy around this. This policy was made for a reason, and I, I, yeah, but just, and I know this has come up before with the Kowchun Summer Festival, and I think there's things around that, but it's a market, so they're selling something, and so we would be seen as possibly helping out a specific business. So I would be hesitant to go back on a policy that we have, just for the sake of doing that. So I think if this was cleared through others, but if we make an exception for this application, then we have to look at all the other applications, and then, I'm not sure why we made the policy, but I know there's been lots of conversation and lots of input on the policy, so I'd be- and lots of input on the policy. So I'd be hesitant to override it, but I also am usually called the policy police, so.
Ms. Jackson?
Uh, that policy was written for hot dog vendors that came to town one year. Um, and we came up with that because we didn't want the guy to be setting up on Station Street like at that time, I think he was in front of Canadian Tire or whatever. So this is no different than say Thursday or farmer's market or something. It's like a couple of hours on a Sat, a Thursday afternoon. It's to introduce the Cowichan Valley Cooperative Market, Marketplace, which is a meet your farmer event to promote the region's new online farmer's market, which is, uh, cowichancoop.ca. It looks like it's going to be fun. I'd, I can't imagine why we wouldn't say yeah. I don't think it goes against the kiosk policy. It's no different than what happens during summer festivals. So I'm, I'm a little bit thunderstruck, actually.
Thank you. So their motion on the floor is to authorize the, the fills, facility use agreement with including up to 10 of the co-op vendors with tables intent selling their product. That is the motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Uh-uh.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. One opposed. Did you want your name registered opposed?
Well, I just wanted to do a friendly amendment. Could this go through the DBIA?
Um, it's probably a little late for, and that's not really a friendly amendment.
Why? It's, it's an after-hours deal.
Sounds nicer when it's friendly.
Yes. Okay. All right.
I just feel like I don't really know.
Yeah, well, we can, we, maybe we revisit as, as we go forward.
I guess we'll see.
Okay, so, um, that motion is carried. So we move to, um, the Duncan, yes?
Just seeking verification from Counselor Bell, were you opposed?
Yes, she was. Reluctantly, half, she was half opposed.
I don't know. I'm hesitant. I'm, I'm for it. I think it's great. So let's go for it. If people come in, I'll take the.
That, that won't be your responsibility.
Yeah, with all of you.
Okay. Um, so I'm going to move on to eight, seven, which is the Duncan Festival Society, thirty nine, thirty nine, thirty-nine days of July. I want to preface before this goes out, and you know what? This is one thing that I'm not going to read out, if you would allow me not to have to read this. Um, but I do want to, um, uh, show our appreciation with respect to the Summer Festival Society. Um, I, I think listening to the input that we helped to provide with respect to the changes they were proposing for this year. And I, and I think, uh, I want to really thank their, their board and the people involved with it and the people at the BIA, um, to come to, uh, agreement to, um, to hold the festival and the parade, um, uh, in its normal third week of July for this year as all these groups, uh, look to making significant improvements and changes to the summer festival. And I think, uh, that's commendable for them to be looking. Um, I, it's growing, the thirty-nine days of July are growing. Um, the, the business era community down here is looking to change their focus and the kind of things that they want to do. Um, so I think, uh, pressing the pause on making changes for, for this particular year because we're deep, now the days are coming closer and there's a lot of logistics involved in, in changing dates and moving times. So, uh, so I do really appreciate their, uh, for them opening, being open to, to that suggestion. So with that, we are going to be approving all of the logistical issues with respect to road closures, declaration of the thirty-nine days, festival areas for roped-off activities with respect to Canada Day, um, Children's Day, uh, the parade, um, parking, um, all of those things which are, uh, in this, this resolution. And hopefully council's read it carefully so if there are any issues. But it is pretty much, uh, the same, uh, as it has always been year after year. And so it is a kind of a well-oiled machine in that respect. So, but we do pass the motion with respect to closures, uh, here. So if I could have a mover for that as a seconder, okay? Any discussion on it at all? Counselor Duncan?
Um, thank you, your worship. I think the, uh, snow fencing is new. Um, ten feet from the tracks is going to actually be quite a ways into what would have been the performance area for the stage from my, you know, from my recollection. I think this is new from last year. There was, I don't recall that there was snow fencing at the tracks.
Yes.
It was on there last year and it's a railway has, uh, through, a couple of years ago, there were some issues about, um, encroachment onto the railway itself. So we've, through working with the railway, there, they've, we've come up with the 10 feet and some, it's not an overly onerous barrier between the two.
Yeah, I think it's just barely out of the gra, little gravel area, um, there. So, um, and in that, you know, that, that is an issue, um, uh, whether, uh, when you're on an active railroad, there are, the liability is, and it could be for all kinds of things. And it's still there, you know, depending if the person trips over the track, there's all kinds of issues. You're, it is private property, uh, in law. So, um, that's the accommodation they're, they're willing to do. So other than that question, is there any other comments? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion's carried. Okay.
Just that Peter's knee.
I was going to make a funny comment to Counselor Horgan because it is a smile, but we'll talk, we're going to do it later.
I'll give you one.
I'll give you one later. Yeah, not here. Thank you.
I'll.
Okay, so we are moving on to eight point eight, which is the, uh, well, number three MMC, uh, update budget amendment. Uh, the council directs staff to prepare the financial plan amendment to increase the budget for well number three standby generator and the MMC, uh, from, which is motor control center, uh, just for everybody's information, uh, from fifty thousand to one hundred and twelve thousand with funds to come from the water fund. And in the report, it gives the background, maybe I'll allow Talitha just to, for the public's thing, because that seems like a, a big increase, but it's actually not. So.
So during, um, budget planning for 2016 year, uh, the consultants were very optimistic with how much work they thought would be done by year end. They expected the majority of the project to be done by the end of the year with just a minor, uh, carry forward to 2016. So that's all that we included. Of course, unspent budget funds never automatically carry forward. So the, the, uh, increase to the 2016 budget is actually carry forward from the 2015. So it's unspent money that was included in the 2015 budget.
For the same project?
Yeah, and it's to complete the project. And, and actually the contractor kept working, so the work's already been done. So this is to ensure that the, um, that we can legally pay the contractor for the work that they've been, that we anticipated being done last year. So.
Okay. And that's a good explanation. Is there a mover for this motion? A cue, seconder? Uh, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, eight point nine, this is with respect to code of conduct policy amendment and guidelines for completing a conflict of interest disclosure statement. Um, this is, uh, this was something that we, uh, had discussed recently with respect to a number of, um, I guess understandings and clarifications with respect to policy. Of course, we are all under, uh, the Local Government Act and the community charter with respect to, um, those issues around conflict. And, and you see it, the public sees it time to time that councillors recuse themselves from discussion with respect to items where there may be pecuniary interest or, uh, financial interest and, and even the more complicated part these days because of legal cases and precedents, uh, with respect to non-pecuniary interests. So, um, it's been a challenge for not just us, but many, many councils. Uh, one thing I did, um, ask, and I, I, it was unfortunate not all council could have attend, but we did, um, uh, attend, uh, many councils, I think Counselor Bell and Jackson, myself and staff and others. Um, the, there was a, uh, uh, conference or one-day conference with the International Law, sorry, I'm going to muggle this because I can't remember what their name was, a very long international law center. It's a, it's actually a center, uh, that there's only two locations in the world, one here in Vancouver as a part of the UBC campus and one in, I believe Italy. Um, and there was a good discussion through that webinar, through that conference, uh, on issues around, uh, conflict of interest, um, uh, ethical conduct, um, fraud, corruption, all these things. And there was some extremely, extremely good speakers. And of course, they had, uh, someone there who was from Quebec who was a, a lead in the Charbonneau Commission. And, and it was just good, I think, for us to get a concept of, of how, um, easily and possibly innocently, um, these things can get started. And of course, in that case, in Quebec, it, it's turned into a, to a very large and, and costly issue, um, with both respect to the reputation of, of government and also to, uh, to people individually. So, um, as a result of this, we've reviewed all of the activities we have, the kinds of committees we had, um, how they're structured and how they'll be done. So there'll be, this policy addresses, um, uh, what we feel is a better practice, a best practice. I won't say we're at best practice yet because there are many things with respect to developing a strategy and a plan. Uh, we have, we will likely do that, um, going forward, but with the capacity of the city, this is the first step. Um, so this will be, uh, including all of council and staff as, and as well as, um, uh, committee members who join to the, uh, um, to committees of the city, uh, where they will, um, complete a conflict of interest, in, interest disclosure statement. This is in addition, um, to the, um, financial disclosures that you do annually, which, uh, shows your other private interests or, uh, interest in other things. But this was an addition and it's not unusual. Um, in fact, I am, uh, chair and involved in two other boards where that is exactly what we do. Um, and all members of advisory committees and everything actually fill out a conflict of interest disclosure, uh, on a yearly basis and confidentially, confidentially agreements as well. So that's to give the background. So the, uh, this is, uh, the, the motion here, the council approved the proposed amendments to section four one three and section four two of the code of conduct policy as it relates to conflict of interest disclosure statements for council and committee members. This is attached to the April 18th, 2016 report by the Director of Corporate Services. And the council prov, is this two separate motions or is it a, yeah. So we've got two separate motions. We'll start with that one. So is there a mover? A seconder? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And the second motion, that council approved the declaration of conflict interest form and accompanying guidelines for completing a conflict of interest disclosure statement for council and committee members is attached to the April 18th report of the Director of Corporate Services.
To move.
Moved and seconder? Second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Wait now.
Oh, thank you. Okay. And I will just say, I think I mentioned in my preamble that I talked about staff and I'm not sure that we had included staff in this, but I believe, um, they do the, the financial disclosures. Will they be included in this conflict disclosure as well?
It didn't specifically address staff members, but certainly we can.
Do that.
We can do that, I know.
Okay. Counselor Bell?
Um, as I was clear and, uh, closed, so I want to be clear and open that, uh, this policy leaves, uh, it on the onus of the individual to make the right decision. And we have laws and bylaws, uh, because it is proven that that doesn't work, leaving it on the honor system doesn't work. Um, I'm completely opposed to having individuals or committee members that are part of, uh, committees that they intend on getting contracts from, being a part of that decision-making and knowing the inner workings, uh, along with the budgets. If they have intentions or family members have intentions or organizations have intentions or friends have intentions of, uh, getting contracts from those, because there's no way the public will know that you've left the room at the end. The, the conflict of interest happens during the, the decision-making on the direction of the council. Um, and it, so if we leave the room while the budget's happening, it's already happened. And so I think it's just, uh, best practices. As you said, we're moving towards it. I think we missed an opportunity. Um, we are not in a fair and just society. Uh, things are not equal. And if you are in a position of power, uh, our obligation is to the greater good. And so I, I think that it, for me, it makes me uncomfortable that we would allow people, uh, council or committee members to apply for contracts out of the committees that they sit on, not for the city of whole, but on the actual committees. So, um, again, I'm, uh, I think we missed an opportunity here to, uh, run a tighter ship. So.
Uh, thank you for that. We did have, you know, a good, I believe, everybody will say we had a good fuls, fulsome debate with respect to that. And, um, I don't think, I think there will be further, um, policy amendment changes going forward as we try to get to best practices as possible. So, um, I thank everybody for being involved with that. I know it wasn't, uh, an easy, easy process. So, um, with that, I'm going to call the question on this motion. If there's no other dialogue or questions, hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And the motion carries. So we move to reports of committees. We have the March 30th Tourism Committee Recommendation, um, that Counselor John Horgan be appointed to the Totem Subcommittee as a Tourism Committee Representative. Is there a mover for that?
I'd like to do that. That's exciting.
Okay, seconder? Did any, did anybody ask Counselor Horgan?
No.
He was at the meeting.
I have to be the only person there.
Okay.
I'm already on.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? There's nobody opposed, Counselor Horgan.
I can see that.
Okay. Um, item nine, one, which is April 4th, 2016 Committee Recommendations, Grants in Aid. Um, now there's quite a long list and it's probably for the public purpose, um, it would be, um, good to read them up. So does council concur with that or would you like to deal with? Can we omnibus these or do you, would it be best to?
I think you should want.
Okay, so let's do something unique and maybe because there's so many, let's start from, uh, Counselor Horgan. And each person will take a turn with the next one, if you want to announce it. So I, don't lose my voice.
Thanks very much.
So we have to move nine, one, one?
This is just for you.
Nine, one, one first.
Just for you, Peter. Uh, the B.C. Forest Discovery Center.
No, yeah, sorry, uh, John, it would be the first, the first nine, one, one on your agenda?
See the report.
The Grants in Aid for 2016.
Oh, okay. The council received the April 18th, 2016 Grants in Aid for 2016. Report by the Director of Finance for information only.
Second.
Okay, seconded. Any discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Um, Counselor Bell? Nine, one, two?
Oh, welcome. We're just taking parents?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, nine, one, nine point one point two, that the B.C. Forest Discovery Center awarded a grant aid in the amount of $750 to assist in the making of the heritage domain building 100% wheelchair accessible.
Okay, that's moved. Is there a seconder? Seconded. Any discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Jackson, nine, one, three?
Uh, Big Brothers and Sisters, that the Big Brothers and Sisters Couch and Valley's request for grant and aid in the amount of $2,000 to increase organizational, organizational capacity and process incoming applicants be denied.
Okay, so moved and seconder? Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, the motion to deny? Opposed? That motion's carried. Nine, one, four, um, Counselor, oh, I'll do that one if you don't mind. Um, the County District Hospital Foundation should be provided with an in-kind donation of a Delmar Johnny print to be used as a prize at the champagne dinner and auction.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Uh, Counselor Duncan, nine, one, five?
Uh, that the Cowichan Energy Alternatives be awarded a grant and aid in the amount of $500 to assist in funding a campaign for community education, engagement and action to encourage and empower people and businesses in the city of Duncan to make choices that help them live healthier, carbon-smart lifestyles.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Uh, nine, one, seven. Counselor Bruce?
Cowichan Folk Guild, that the Cowichan Folk Guild be awarded a grant aid, the amount of $1,000 to provide a performance venue for their youth and upcoming performers who are beginning their musical careers.
Second.
Okay, that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item nine, one, seven, Counselor Staples?
Cowichan Therapeutic Writing Association, that the Cowichan Therapeutic Writing Association be awarded a grant and aid in the amount of $1,000 to assist with program operations.
Is there a seconder? Seconded. And any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm going to exit for the next one.
Okay. Uh, and would you declare what your conflict is, please?
Just in case there's a possible conflict as we, uh, work with them, with my organization and partnership.
Through social planning, okay. Thank you. So item nine, one, eight. So we'll go back to Counselor Horgan.
Uh, the Cowichan Valley Intercultural and Immigrant Aid Society. And do I read that note, Counselor Staples? Has previously declared a conflict of interest on this matter?
She's declared that, just the, just the motion.
Okay. That the Cowichan Valley Intercultural and Immigrant Aid Society be awarded a grant in aid to the amount of $1,000 to assist with the Cowichan Interco, Inter-Cultural Partnership Summit. And that the society be asked to make a presentation to council in the future to report on the event's success.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, so we move to nine point one, nine, which should be Counselor Bell.
Have to wait for Counselor Staples?
And this is appropriate that it landed on you for this one?
Yes, yes. I was a big advocate of this one. That the Cowichan Valley Performing Arts Foundation be awarded a grant and aid in the amount of $1,000 to extend bursaries and scholarships to applicants requiring financial assistance for performing arts programs.
And the seconder? Seconded. And any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Um, nine, one, ten, uh, Counselor Jackson?
That Duncan BIA be awarded a grant and aid in the amount of $2,500 to assist to the delivery of Dunkin' Days for 2016.
Okay, seconder? Okay, seconder? Thank you. Discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, Councilor Duncan?
Thank you, Worship. I believe that the number of days has gone down from three to two, so I do question why we're down to one day. So we've gone from three days down to, it's actually not Duncan Days anymore, it's only Duncan Day. So I do question why we haven't reduced the funding, because we provided twenty five hundred dollars funding for the last four years based on two or three days, now we're down to one day. So I'll be voting against this because I feel that we should have reduced the funding to, to reflect the corresponding number of days.
Okay, other comments? Discussion? I, I will comment on that myself. Although they have reduced the, to a day, it was always two days. I think the objective of the B I A is to concentrate the activities far more focused in a focused way with a lot more activities on the streets. They have had issues with the participation of some of the areas that are more outlined from the, the core part of the downtown, which is around, centered around Craig and Station Street and Charles Hill Park with the thirty nine day festival, to try to get more activities right through the downtown core. So they plan on spending just as much as they would have for the two day period, so. Councilor Horgan?
Just a, a comment for Councilor Duncan, that inflation's rampant in Duncan right now.
I'm going to call a question. I'm going to call a question, all those in favor? Opposed, the motion carries. Well, maybe a deflation of time. Okay, so where were we? We're back to nine one eleven and it's, oh, is it?
Yeah.
Where were we? Well, Councilor Horgan just did that one, so.
No, he didn't, Councilor Jackson.
Councilor Jackson, sorry, this is me, sorry, thank you. That, that a Duncan daycare or caridian learning be awarded a grant in aid in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars to support an nutrition program. Is there a seconder? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Councilor Duncan?
That the Duncan Housing Society's grant in aid request in the amount of twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of hiring a liaison slash volunteer coordinator to assist Duncan minor residents be denied.
Okay, is there a seconder? Seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call the question, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Nine one three, Councilor Duncan, Bruce?
Duncan Volunteer Firefighters Historical Society, that the Duncan Volunteer Firefighters Historical Society be awarded a one-time grant in aid in the amount of thousand dollars to assist in covering the society's core fixed costs such as insurance, fuel and various other miscellaneous items.
Okay, seconder? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, are you, are you?
No, I'm biting my tongue because I know Councilor Jackson is too close, she whacks off.
It's important that when you do put up your hand, you put it up clearly one way or the other, so I can actually count. Great, thank you. So we are now back to?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, and that's Councilor.
Green Door Society, that the Green Door Society's request for a grant in aid in the amount of two thousand dollars to cover electricity costs and use of washrooms for the Duncan Farmers Market vendors be denied.
Seconder? And discussion? Question, all in favor? Councilor Jackson?
I had a hard time with this one, I, but you know, at, when it comes right down to it, there, there are two societies and, and they have to work it out between them, the, the costs. I mean, if the Green Door is not getting enough from the Farmers Market Society and the Farmers Market Society has to up its rates?
I believe that our administrator has had discussions with, with groups and they, and I believe that it is, for the most part, worked out. The cost certainly for electricity is nowhere approaches this amount of money and the city's not really involved, these are both private organizations. So I'm going to call a question then, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Nine one five? Where are we at? Councilor Horgan?
Oh, sorry. Growing Together Child Care Center, that the Growing Together Child Care Center's request for a grant in aid in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars to add four picnic tables and a gazebo for a shelter in their garden at four ninety Count's Mayor Street be denied. And that the Growing Together Child Care Center be encouraged to contact various service clubs such as the Duncan Lions Club, the Rotary Club, to see if there is an opportunity for assistance with that project.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, that motion carried. Item nine one six, Jubilee Garden, that Councilor Bell?
That the Jubilee Community Garden Society, Garden Pals, be awarded a grant in aid in the amount of fifteen hundred for the proposed of installing, installing a drip irrigation system to conserve water, fourteen hundred dollars, and a program materials at a hundred dollars.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion's carried.
I have to leave for the next one because I'm doing your website.
Just with, with comment, and I, I believe I also have to recuse myself, so I'm going to, because this individual that applied is a client of ours, so if Councilor Duncan would take over, thank you. Just give me a couple of seconds, okay?
Nine point one point one seven, that the request by the Mill Bay Rescue Society for a grant in aid in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to refit slash rebuild older vessels to provide marine search and rescue services be denied.
Seconder? Any question? All in favor? Carried. Come on back!
They both skipped out, they just didn't want to read them.
Okay, we were at nine one eight. I take it? Yes. And that is, Councilor Bruce, thank you.
Next Step Outreach Day Program, that the request by the Next Step Outreach Day Program Society for a grant in aid in the amount of five thousand to secure a location for a day program to address the needs of youth, young adults with special needs and the purpose of supplies be denied.
Seconder? Seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Nine one one nine?
Salmonos Marsh Wildlife Society, that the Salmonos Marsh Wildlife Society be awarded a grant in aid in the amount of one thousand dollars to host the North American Trumpeter Swan Society's twenty fourth annual swan conference.
Seconder? Any discussion? Councilor Horgan?
Yeah, I'm to speak against this one again, I think this is, I don't think this is something we should be getting involved in, I think this is not quite the city's cup of tea, not my cup of tea anyway, so I'm going to, no, I'm going to vote against it.
Okay. Councilor Bruce?
I support Councilor Horgan on that and I'll vote against this as well.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Councilor Bell?
I did, I thought we had a caveat on it, it was based on attend, sign up.
I.
Registration.
Ms. Robertson?
I apologize, there is an error in this one, the actual motion that passed was for it to be denied, there was a bit of confusion due to people going in and out of the room, so I missed the second part of that and my apologies.
Okay, so the motion is actually to deny, that's not the motion that was made though, so. That's, that's, so what I would suggest is that if council wants to defeat the motion to approve it, we do so and then we forward a motion for denial, okay? Councilor Jackson?
Just for clarity, I, my recollection was that it was not denied, but that we were going to give them one thousand dollars on the proviso that the event was actually going to happen, the concern.
I just, I would actually ask, if Ms. Robertson could refer to the minutes, which were approved? Let's, let's move on, let's move on and can we, that is on the table, the motion to, to approve, can I have everyone's attention, please? Thank you. The motion is to approve it, that is on the table, so it won't go off the table, we will move on and we will come back to that when, when we have the first. You do have it? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the recommendation was for a grant in aid in the amount of three thousand to host the Trumpeter Swan Society's annual swan conference to be denied. It was defeated on a tie vote because Councilor Horgan was outside of the room at the time. He came back into the room, so it wasn't because of a declared conflict of interest, but when he came back in the room, that was enough to defeat the motion for three. And opposed was Mayor Kent, Councilors Bell, Bruce and Horgan, and because it was an amendment for a thousand dollars and that got defeated.
Those are the minutes and those, that's what was approved. So there's, there's a motion on the table to approve the thousand dollars, so I'm going to ask that you vote accordingly, respect that, and we would come back with another motion if that's appropriate at that point. So I'm going to call a question on the motion, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion's defeated and so I guess, is that what we really need to do then? Do we need to, okay, so that's, that's that. We don't need to put another motion forward to deny because it's just denied, so. Okay? So we move to nine one two?
Can I just clarify, so there was maybe, did I leave the room too? Because I, I don't remember voting that one down, I thought there was a, it was based on attendance, so we denied, I thought that we had.
I, I, I think we had that discussion, but I don't think it made a difference, the motion was still denied. So, and that's what's reflected in the minutes, which we've approved already at the beginning of the evening, so. Okay, so nine one two zero, and we are, where are we with this now? Who did the last one?
I did.
Okay, so be Councilor.
Oh, is it me? I'm still thinking whether we're going to have ducks next week or sheep or, sorry. Nine point one two zero?
Levity is okay, but we are in a regular counting room, it's been livestreams.
That's okay, I'm sure people appreciate a little.
No, it's okay, oh, no, I, I agree with that.
We do smile now again. Yep. Saint John's Ambulance Youth Service, that the Saint John Ambulance Youth Service Program be awarded a grant in aid in the amount of one thousand dollars to assist with training and support for youth to attend first aid competitions on Vancouver Island.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Nine one two one, Councilor Bell?
That the Vancouver Island Green Business, Business Programs request for a grant in aid in the amount of twenty five hundred to launch an initiative to promote the city of Duncan's sustainability programs be denied.
Okay, seconder? All, any discussion, sorry, questions? All in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Nine one two two, which is the Rotarying Spelling Bee and that is?
That council participate in the Rotary Club of Duncan Spelling Bee for literacy on Monday, May eighteenth from seven thirty to nine AM and purchase one table at a cost of two hundred dollars.
And second, is it okay? Discussion? Yep. Councilor Duncan and Staples, please?
I think Councilor Jackson should have had to spell each word that she said, it's practice for the bee.
I just, I just wanted to just check in because I can't remember who on council said that they were going to attend the Spelling Bee this year. Oh, excellent.
Karen and I.
Good.
That's why I'm getting her to brush up.
Okay, just checking.
I'm not sure that you want to, spelling, I had Mrs. Bycey in grade five for spelling, so that's a problem. I'm afraid to spell. So, okay, I'm going to call a question, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried, and the little final one comes to me, that the nine one two three, which is Grants in Aid surplus funds, that the remainder of the grant in aid budget totaling three thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight be placed back in the general government budget. And that's, well, okay, moved and seconded, and discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Okay. Thank you for that, that was a, that was a long stretch and a long committee, the whole meeting, but I think we got through the process quite well this year, so congratulations, Councilor.
Just a quick question about that, is that, we were taking a little bit more out for the, the next item on the agenda, so does that take into that? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so we move to item nine two of the agenda, which is the April fourth, twenty sixteen Committee Rec, Committee of the Whole Recommendations, I would take those, that's what that is, Committee of the Whole Recommendations, so I will transfer that to the chair, which I think is?
It was me.
Jackson?
Yeah. So transit, well, you.
For this one, for the April fourth?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just separated from grants, from the other business.
Okay, then this is the other business, so.
Supposed to, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Tom, sorry.
Okay.
Transit pass rebate program, you're just trying to brush up on those words, right, for the spelling. That council amend the transit pass rebate program for two thousand and sixteen, so I have seventy-five percent transit pass rebate for the first pass and twenty-five percent for subsequent passes from May to December of twenty sixteen, and that the remaining funds of three thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars from the grant in aid budget be utilized to fund any shortfall from the transit pass rebate program.
Okay, discussion at all?
Second.
Okay. I, just, just to give some context to this, it's actually sort of a good thing because we've of course had a hundred percent rebate with respect to transit and very few people uptaking that. This year, it seems that, that the program has taken off and there's a whole bunch more people who are accessing, accessing the rebate program, and so we didn't have enough in the budget to actually cover the anticipated use of the program. So I did not, I still have some reservations as to whether this is the actual way to get people onto transit. I think changes in the schedule and, and frequency of buses is probably more effective, but we, we can't affect that on our own. So this has, had good feedback, obviously, and some people are uptaking it more and more, so this is for Duncan residents who buy bus passes on a regular base, basis to get a discounted or, or nearly full rebate on using the transit system. So any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Item nine two two, this is, oh, Councilor, sorry, Councilor Duncan, you carried, yeah, yeah, thank you.
That council approve a change to the extended healthcare benefits for council to be the same as the benefits received by union and excluded staff.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded? Okay, any discussion? I think this is just a, a minor change with respect to the total amount, the eye care was covered on the extended medical, but it wasn't covered to the same amount, so I think it's a fifty dollar difference or something like that. It includes the ability to get an eye exam with respect to buses, so all those in favor? Opposed, that's motion carried. And item nine two three? Yes, it is.
That council pursue to unsightly premises by number fifteen ninety-one nineteen nine?
Direct that the owners of block five, block one, section seventeen, range seven, Plan V I P one seven two one, bracket six ninety-two Charlotte Street, close bracket, to remove the material as listed below from the exterior premises within thirty days or the work will be done by the city or its agents at the owner's cost. Scrap metal, wrecked vehicles, construction materials, household appliances, furniture, other discarded items and miscellaneous debris, overgrown lawn in the front yard.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this motion? I think the, is, in this particular case, was there a, a process where the person in that was able to address council and they've chosen not to, or are we not at that stage?
There was no specific invitation for him to come to council, he has been advised three separate times that this process would be coming, and each time the deadline was given and each time it passed, so he's been notified three times.
Okay. With that, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried.
Street vendors for the summer of twenty sixteen, that staff be directed to advertise for applications from food vendors interested in vending in Charles Hoi and Centennial Parks during the summer of twenty sixteen, and that staff be directed to convene a meeting at the street vendor working group to review the applications and provide a recommendation to the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries?
Nine point two point five, Government Street Traffic Improvements, that council
Nine point two point five, Government Street Traffic Improvements, that council approve the, approve the award of the Government Street Traffic Improvements RFP to Stan Tech Consulting Limited for an estimated cost of eighty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars plus applicable tax and a modified scope, and that council direct staff to amend the financial plan as detailed in the April fourth, twenty sixteen report by the CAO.
Okay, second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, the motion carries. And we have moved to item ten point one, which is respect to correspondence. And there's a letter from the Island Corridor Foundation, Local Government Liaison Committee Appointee, and I will accuse myself as I sit as a boarder director for the Island Corridor Foundation and would be in conflict though.
So just a question through you to Mr. Divertai. Is this to replace the mayor or in addition to the mayor?
In addition, this is a separate liaison committee they're trying to establish to provide an opportunity for the feedback that sometimes has been difficult in the past. Because, of course, as you know, you can see now that mayor has to step out whenever there's ICF comes up. So it's difficult for him to update on what's going on. So if they provide this other liaison committee, they'll be able to provide updates through that other party.
Thank you.
Now, okay, I am prepared to step forward and volunteer. Go ahead, councillor Horgan.
I move councillor Duncan be appointed as the Local Government Liaison Committee Appointee to the Island Corridor Foundation Liaison Committee.
I'll second that, but I would like to speak first.
Go ahead.
I just wondered whether councillor Bruce would be in conflict and should lead the room while we discuss this issue, so you don't get yourself getting your fingers wrapped or something later.
I certainly can. I wasn't going to put my name forward, so. I think for the same reason, you probably should. Thank you.
So I guess for the minutes then, it should reflect that councillor Bruce has left because his brother is employed by the ICF? It was a move, go ahead.
I, I'm not sure if this is the time to speak to this or not. I think, I, I guess I'm really confused. Like, doesn't the mayor sit on the Island Corridor Foundation as a city representative? But when the Island Corridor Foundation is brought forward, then he has to leave because he's in conflict? So that's really confusing because his sole obligation would be to the city. So why he, so first of all, that's one. Second is I know that he sits on there as a representative, so he's paid through the city, but I know that if you're on the board, you get paid a two hundred dollar.
State's husband?
Yeah, meeting amount, which I think is in conflict when the board obviously has a financial vested interest to be in support of the Island Corridor Foundation, which they represent the city for, but they can't ever talk to us about it. So how can you represent the city's voice if we never, ever have a conversation about where we stand as the city? And so I would be, I appreciate you stepping forward, but I think that the liaison position to me is a token position to be on that. There's another layer, and if everything is confidential, that's not, we're a local government. We are accountable and transparent to have so much going on that we can't even report to or speak to. Makes me really uncomfortable. I'd rather not be a part of it at all. And just, just the fact that our representative has to leave because they're in conflict is super confusing. That doesn't seem transparent. It doesn't seem like follows any of the local government policies. So I, I would, I would be curious what, why do we need a liaison person? Another layer to something that clearly is not working. But I'm not, not in support of you going. I just, I, I, the whole situation to me is really frustrating and confusing. And I'm on council. I can't imagine how the community feels as they put million dollars into this.
Did you want to address that, Peter? Or, you know?
I, I would just, further to that, I would like to get an explanation why the mayor is in conflict and why he can't tell us what's going on and why we need to send somebody else. I don't have a problem with Tom doing it. I'm, I, I think it's admirable, admirable that he would step up and go. And if that's the way it's got to be, then I'm all for you going, Tom. But I don't understand what's the difference in you being there than the mayor being there? You're going to be in conflict too, aren't you?
I, my understanding is the mayor steps out because he's on the board of directors. This is supposedly, according to the letter here, it's a liaison committee to assist with communications where he can't tell us what's going on. Right? Where he, he can't, he actually can't give us a standard report because he's in conflict. That's my understanding. What about?
I'd like to, I'd like to try and get some explanation about that. What, why is he in conflict? What's, what, what is the conflict? Because he gets paid by them?
I think Peter was going to explain that to us, so maybe.
It's not about payment. It's just as a, as a member of the board, you have a fiduciary duty. This is related to that court case in, was it Tito's Island? Anyway, there was a court case a couple of years ago where the board members were then voted on a, on a decision at the, sorry, where the board members voted on a decision at the, at the council or the Islands Trust tables. And they, although they didn't actually run in the following election, the court's decision was that had they, they would have been removed from office. So if you're, you, if you are a board member, whether you're getting paid by an organization or not, you have a fiduciary duty to that organization and as such have a pecuniary interest in the well-being of that organization. So as such, you can't be party to any discussions relating to that organization at the council table. So that, and, and that would be no different than if, well, for, for example, councillor Staples works for Social Planning Couchin. So when that comes forward, there's a fiduciary connection there and can't be party to any of the discussions regarding Social Planning Couchin. Or if one of you sits on, I can think of another nonprofit. But is, if you're a board member, that's one thing. And that's why a lot of municipalities have moved towards liaison appointments. Now, there's a requirement for them to have a certain number of board members, and the mayor is appointed actually by the regional district to sit on the ICF. That's how his appointment comes, not through the city. So he, he can't, based on the legal advice that's out there, and, and that's the, the recommended practice at this time, is to not participate in discussions or even presentations, because we've actually had a legal opinion on that ourselves, even presentations regarding that particular organization, regardless of whether there's actually a decision to be made at the moment. So that's proved problematic, and I believe that is why the Island Corridor Foundation is creating this little subgroup, if you will, just for improving that communication level, because it has provided all sorts of angst up and down the island as for lack of, of communication, in part because of those, that fiduciary duty and responsibility to the organization, the Corridor Foundation, which means they can't keep you guys in, in the loop.
So councillor Duncan can sit at the board meeting?
What they'll be doing there is going to meetings to get updated by whoever, maybe the chair, and then, then they'll be, Tom will be able to provide you some better information, hopefully.
Yeah, I won't be going, I don't think I'm going to board meeting.
But you, so I don't understand. And what, if he can't go to the board meeting and listen to the process and come back and tell us, he's no better off than the mayor? He's just going to get given information? I don't, I don't understand this at all.
From the information provided, I don't know whether councillor Duncan would be permitted to go to the board meeting or not. That could be a separate question or discussion. What I do know is that they've provided an opportunity to update all the liaisons so that they can keep the boards, the various councils.
So you, so you have to sit outside and then they give you a letter and say what they said?
I'm not sure. I guess I'll go and see what happens. But I, I have councillor Jackson and councillor Bell, but I'm not sure who was first.
I, I find this very confusing as do others here. Like, the, the reason why the mayor is on the, on board is because he is the mayor. If he were the mayor, he wouldn't be on that board. So I thought he was representing us. And I'm just thinking that, why don't we just refer this to the next Committee of the Whole so it can be explained to us? Like everybody else here, I think Tom would be great. I just don't, I don't understand the reason behind it. So if we could just refer this to the next Committee of the Whole and get it clear, and then we can appoint Tom if that's what we decide to do.
Okay, so the motion on the floor, you'd have to defeat it first?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Motion to refer, dibs.
So I just want to ask another clarifying question, because what I heard councillor Jackson say and what I heard you say were different. So the mayor is not on the, is not on the board because he's the mayor. He's on the board because the CVRD appointed him.
Correct.
So he's not actually there representing the city? Is that correct? Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Anyway, motion to refer is on the floor.
Is there a secondaire? Okay, motion to refer with a secondaire? Go ahead, Peter.
I would just, I don't think there's any harm. You choose to do whichever you like, but in appointing councillor Duncan and then getting some clarity on what the purpose and function and role of the, this liaison group is going to be, I don't know if there's a need to defer it, but that's your, your choice.
Well, I'd like clarity as to why, if the mayor sits on the board as, for, as a city representative, because that's what I'd be representing. He sits on the CVRD as a, as the mayor, so is he being appointed? When he represents himself at the ICF, my understanding is he's there as Mayor Phil Kent, representing the city, because I've had this debate with him at least two times about how can you be representing us? And he's never said to me, I'm not. So I'd like clarity if he is actually representing the city on that, or he's representing himself. That will give us clarity.
Or the CVRD.
Or the CVRD, yeah. But he's on the CVRD for the city. He's not there as an average Joe citizen, so, right? He's on the CVRD representing the city, so how, he's not being appointed as an, as a common folk.
Well, I guess all I would say is that.
Know what I mean?
You would have to vote to refer, but I think that you're going to get the same answer, which is around the conflict of interest, that you're going to get the same answer. But I can tell from the, the looks, the questions and the confusion, that we're best to refer at this stage. So I'm going to call a question. All in favor to refer?
I don't see the point. But I'm not opposed to it.
Okay. Carry.
Do you want to ask the boys to come back?
I've got the base, I just don't have the, the string part.
Back. To you for ten point two.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so we move to item ten two, which is proclamation of the Child Finds Green Ribbon of Hope Month for National Missing Children's Day. And there's a proclamation that may be proclaimed as the Child Finds Green Ribbon of Hope Month and that May twenty-fifth be proclaimed as the National Missing Children's Day.
So moved.
Secondaire?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, opposed, thank you. We move to item ten three, which is a proclamation with respect to National Public Works Week, that May fifteenth to twenty-one, twenty-first, twenty sixteen be proclaimed as the National Public Works Week in the city of Duncan.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, all in favor?
Yeah, discussion.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do, do, through you to the CAO, to Peter, do we have any plans for any sort of activities this year?
Just making a note to remind myself to follow up. But we've had a few discussions at Labor Management a few times. Hasn't been a big uptick from the staff, but we've talked just last week, I believe it was, at Labor Management again, and I said I would sort of lead things off. So I hope to get things rolling within the next week or two. Just something relatively low key for our first foray into this. Lots of municipalities do quite large scale events. So I think perhaps that's why there was some apprehension on the part of some of the public work staff, just about how big a deal this would be. So I think we start with something small and just invite some local schools as a small event that might get the ball rolling, and then we can build on that for the future.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any more discussion, questions? All those in favor, opposed, that motion is carried. We move to bylaws. We have the eleven, one, which is bylaw number three, one, two, zero, point, zero, one, which is a Waterworks Regulation Amendment, that council adopt the Waterworks Regulation Bylaw, number three, one, two, zero, point, zero, one, twenty sixteen, a bylaw to change the water restriction sprinkling times in house keeming amendments.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, opposed, that's carried. We move to item eleven, two. This is bylaw three, one, five, one, twenty sixteen, tax rates for twenty sixteen. The council gives three readings to the tax rate bylaw number three, one, five, one, twenty sixteen, a bylaw to establish tax rates for the year twenty sixteen.
So moved.
And a move, seconded, and maybe if we could just have a brief update with respect to staff on that for the public's benefit?
So the tax rates that we're setting for the year will allow council to stay within their policy of trying to keep the business tax multiple at the median. And so changes to property assessment have meant that the tax increase will be a little bit higher on residential properties than on business properties this year, but it does allow council to stay within that policy, or within that policy that they've set, and allows us to get much closer to the median this year.
Okay, great. Any discussion on this bylaw? Hearing none, all is in favor, opposed, and motion carries. And that has to be brought back to council, oh, no, that is the three readings, so it has to be brought to coun, back to council before the end of May.
The bylaw must be adopted before May fifteenth.
Okay.
Because our next council, officially scheduled council meeting is until May sixteenth. We will actually be having a special council meeting on May second, right before the Committee of the Whole, and that bylaw will be adopted at that time.
Okay, and there's sufficient time between now and then to, for this, it can be passed anytime, a day after?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, okay. We called the question on that, did we, Miss Robson? No, I don't believe we did.
You just said yes.
I'm not sure we did, though, because I, I think I asked. Oh, no, I think you're right, we did.
We did.
Okay, thank you, because it was, for, following question.
Increasing taxes twice as much.
Okay. No, it won't be increasing because it's only the reading, the first three readings, so that's fine. So eleven point three, keep me on my game here. Bylaw three, one, one, eight, zero point, zero, seven, bylaw enforcement notice amendment, that council gives three readings to the bylaw offense notice enforcement amendment, bylaw number three, one, one, zero, eight, point, zero, seven, twenty sixteen, a bylaw to establish ticketing for violations to development permit area requirements. This is the first three readings. Seconded?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Can we get an explanation on this one for the public, please?
Cover it if you want. It's a fairly self-explanatory worship. We, we talked about this briefly when we were talking about development permits here early in the meeting. There are tools existing right now, but they're quite cumbersome through the court process for dealing with development permits, or, or sorry, developments that have occurred that are not in compliance or didn't obtain a development permit. This amendment to the bylaw enforcement notice bylaw would give us a ticketing ability on that, and the intention would be to, to adopt this quickly and be able to move forward. We may do so even if there's no objection in conjunction with the special council meeting on May second.
May second, okay. Just a question, so this is not a, the part of the MTI bylaw then?
No, MTIs end up having to be served personally. These are a little easier enforcement of this goes through the bylaw adjudication process as opposed to MTI goes through a court process. So the, the process for dispute and mediation, if you want to call it that, of any tickets that are issued is a much less cumbersome process and less expensive.
Okay. So that explains the issues that we've had with respect to enforcing the bylaw and the issues where we've had.
Provide a better tool than we have right now.
And so this is, this is going through the adjud, the new adjudication process for tickets. Okay, great, so. So I would have a nuver and a secondaire for it? Did I have that? Thank you. Sorry, it's been a long, long day. So discussion or other questions on this? It was, it was again speaking to the issue earlier, so there were some questions with respect to enforcement earlier. This answers all your questions, okay? All those in favor, opposed, that's carried. So we move to reports of mayor and council, so I have myself, and I'm going to be very brief. I attended with a number, a couple, a few other councillor Duncan and some other staff to the spousal appreciation night at the fire hall on the second, and it was, as always, a really great event. And for the first time in, in, I think for me, sixteen years, that they actually had a fire call during the event. And so halfway through, all of the firemen left, or most of them left. And unfortunately, I was not, I didn't have the stamina that night to, to be able to stay for all the speeches. All they did give my thanks and appreciation to the, to the firemen and the spouses and their families for, for their service to the city and how, how important it is to us. So I was able to do that. Of course, a number of us attended the AVICC conference. Some particular highlights, I think, were, there was a really good discussion, a workshop, Some particular highlights, I think, were, there was a really good discussion, a workshop, both and some follow-up with respect to the social policy procurement policy. I think that has some interest in communities across the island and and there'll probably be initiatives that might come forward with respect to how that could be implemented, possibly if not at municipal levels, but at a regional level as well, so that's going on. Attended a conflict workshop. I think a number of our other counselors went as well. It was, it was a little bit tough because I missed a few, I think I missed the first 10 minutes. I I was delayed and getting in, and it was an hour program, which I think had a lot of really good tools with respect to dealing with resolution conflict in in this area. But it was an abridged, probably an abridged workshop of what would be a full day or even more than a full day workshop. So the the value of it was that we received the tools, the ability to actually apply them in the workshop was pretty much non-existent. And although I did talk to the speaker afterwards and he did suggest some readings, and if if anybody wants to know that, I'll pull it off my, where I wrote it down and and some of the, it was quite interesting, some of the readings he was referring to on places we could find tools, so that was useful. I just wanna congratulate our junior counselor and the other youth that were at the conference. And I know that maybe other counselors here will have something to report on that, but I just comment on the very first thing. When I walked into the conference, there was a bathtub and an NIMO race bathtub full of balloons and balls, and they had questions on them, and the youth would sit in the bathtub along with politician and and exchange, pick up these balls and they would pose a question to each other. So and actually, it was engaged pretty much the whole time. I don't know if there was any time that wasn't being used. So there was a real good dialogue between the politicians and the youth councils that were there, so that was cool. On the 11th, I I participated in something I've done a few times with Island Coast Economic Trust, which is respect to a legislative review, so that's always a useful process and a big learning process for me with respect to how legislative review is done and and what they people look at, so it was very informative. Of course, I've been attending the regional district and of course, we have, obviously there's some of the bigger issues with respect to the region with contaminated soil and and the all of the legal judgments that are coming down, which are somewhat conflicting and and those kind of things. We will, the regional district will be meeting in the next few days to address that. And that's, I think, good enough for me at this point, so I had Counsel Jackson.
Thank you very much. On the 2nd, as well as going to the disposal appreciation dinner for the volunteer fire department, it was the 80th anniversary of the Somenos Women's Institute, and they had a tea and a fashion show at Duncan United Church, which was actually quite a hoot. I thoroughly enjoyed myself. And on April the 9th, both Counsel Duncan and I attended the Senate Tap to remember those who fell at Vimy. And there were not that many people there. They're starting to thin out, I'm sorry to say. They're a great bunch of people, those Legion people. And I wanted particularly to wish a happy 100th birthday to not only Bill Hile, who was a tank operator in World War II, but also to Wyn Finney, who was a British nursing sister who married a Canadian soldier and moved Saskatchewan, and then when they retired, moved out here to Vancouver Island. So they both have had their 100th birthdays in the last couple of weeks, so happy birthday to them both. And then on the 14th, again, Counsel Duncan and I were at the Island Savings Center Commission. They've got the bike station up and running there, and there's usually somebody there working away on their bike, either tightening things, there's, it's a thing you can put your bicycle right up on, there's a pump attached to it so that you can pump up your tires and and tools on cords and that. They've worked out all the little problems around that, and it seems to be very well received. And they're also getting ready to pave the parking lot this summer, so be ready for that. It's gonna be a big job.
I've got you, no.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I just, I would like to add my congratulations to Bill Hile. His other note of infamy is that he is the mother of Maureen Dias and the father-in-law of the infamous Jim Dias, who just won the Black Tie Award this year for for lifetime achievement. So congratulations for being 100. I have Counsel Duncan.
Thank you, your worship. On the 8th, I attended the train ceremony, the 130th anniversary of the E&amp;N line up in the NIMO and had a ride on the train there. It was fun because they had open observation cars and it reminded me so much of being in Scotland because we used to hang out the windows on the train in Scotland, but the difference being is that I didn't get a mouthful of soot over on the one on the 8th. I'm now the vice chair of the Vancouver Island Regional Library, so I've attended the chair meetings on the 12th. And Counsel Jackson and I also attended on the 15th, the Tellis Home of the Future trailer opening over here, so.
It was fun.
Counsel Staples?
It was fun going through that thing. I really liked it. I went through it with the kids on the weekend. And then we told the other kids and they didn't believe us when I told them about the host of the future would let me control the fridge. And they said they didn't believe me because they had that scanning device that you could scan, so you, anyways, it's pretty cool. So I am just going to report on a couple of things. One is the North Couch and Conversations that Counsel Bell and I have been in have been going very well. I think it's been a good experience and it's, it's good. So those are on their way around amalgamation discussions of how we're going to do this together. Have discussions, I mean, not amalgamate. And breakfast at Couch and Tribes. Was that was, that was this month, right? That wasn't last month? Counsel Jackson and I.
You're testing me, Counsel.
Do you think, do you think Counsel Jackson, you can remember what you said?
I can remember part of it, but I would like to try it.
Counsel Jackson and I have been practicing, we're practicing our health community and actually did give it, thank you. So it was a, yeah, it was a wonderful breakfast, and that was fun, trying to learn that. And it's like learning, learning five words was sort of like learning, you know, a 10-page speech, but it's amazing how challenging it was. And the youth at the AVICC, so the Duncan Junior Youth Council worked with the NIMO Junior Youth Council and Victoria Council in Sanich to have the very first ever presence at an annual conference. And they got a standing ovation on the Friday for their presentation to the entire plenary, so there was about 400 people there. And the youth did a phenomenal presentation that will be actually on Shaw TV. I don't know when yet, but they're gonna send us the link, so I'll forward it out. And maybe we could put it on our website, too. And they had, all day Saturday, they did, in the afternoon, they did workshops as well for other delegates from other areas about wanting to start youth councils. And the, we, they actually got kicked out of the room because their workshops went so long past the time that they were supposed to because there was, there was just, they were so engaged with the the other councils. And they did an excellent job. I was, it was, it was good to see that. And they gave free hugs when you walked into the conference, when all the delegates walked into the conference, so that went over extremely well and it brought a whole different kind of life, I think, to the conference that I experienced. And and lots of conversations, so it was good. And they put a ton of work into that. I can't tell you how many hours that they dedicated to that. And they are also part of the, there's a big sort of meet-a-wee event happening this Friday for the schools, and they're doing a presentation there. They're being honored as one of the youth groups in the valley, doing good work with with youth. So those things are happening and they were, yeah, it was good.
Thank you. So that concludes that. Now we'll move to question period or any question period of council at this point to staff with respect to agenda items. Hearing none, so I would go to the public or press. Mr. Reslin, welcome back to council chambers.
Thanks, your worship.
I can't say we've always missed you, but we've missed you occasionally.
Nobody misses me, your worship. Seven questions. I'm just wondering, kick off, who sits on the ADP, the Advisory Design Panel? Who, can I have the names for the?
You're gonna test people to actually remember everybody. There's, there's a two architects, a landscape architect, planner, a.
Green build designer.
Green build design person and, yeah. And then Counsel Staples, yeah, I got that. Then the Counsel Staples is a liaison, non-buoyed member.
Thank you, I'll get the full names list from staff. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, was was Counselor Bell in agreement with the recommendations that were debated on the DAKOVA?
I believe she was opposed.
I was opposed.
Opposed, okay, thank you.
Not to all, but I oppose the motion.
Yes, well now, I just wanted to clarify, your worship, what happens with these, with these recommendations? Were they, were they passed or they're defeated?
They were defeated. The motion to to approve it based on the staff report and all the information, including the input from the ADP, was approved, taken all that information into account, so the development amendment, development permit amendment was approved.
Okay, so, and the vote was four to three, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, and I'd like to, I'll get the names from staff as to who was opposed and who was not.
Gender, just go on gender.
No, that that was how to.
I can't guess, I'm sorry. I'm just wondering also, your worship, a vote, the, it's not a policy, but it's the art, the development arts donation guideline through the city. Is DAKOVA giving any money to the arts in this project and if so, how much?
I believe so, that it was in their, in the original develop, rezoning, I believe, was a condition of rezoning, 10,000. Yeah.
Okay, supplemental, your worship, how much is in our arts, arts kitty at this time?
I, let's just get, I'll give, if you, staff can answer that question tomorrow for you. They don't have those things at the finger, fingertips all the time.
Thank you. The traffic improvement on Government Street on the 84,000, what exactly will they look at as far as improvements? What will, what's on the list there?
I'll have Mr. Javertai answer that, please.
So it, there was a preliminary design of a double left turn lane off of Canada Avenue onto Government Street slash Truck Road. So that's, that's the starting point. Off of that, there's a right turn lane that's to be constructed in conjunction with the development of the DAKOVA as well, so two right, two lefts and a separated right turn lane. So this is going to do the detailed design of that infrastructure, infrastructure work as well as review potential connection of the lights between the Cowichan Way and Canada Avenue intersections that don't truly currently work on a synchronized basis.
Okay.
As well, they'll be looking at the interaction between that intersection or those two intersections and Allenby, Craig, Underwood, that whole intersection area. So this, this is solely for the design work and the investigative work on traffic flows and volumes and capacity there, and then we'd move forward to construction.
When do you think that'll happen?
We're, well, we'll need to do some traffic improvements at Canada and Government in the near term this year, but the the full, the full implementation of it would likely be over multiple years.
Start by the end of the year, maybe 2017?
We need to do the deal with the the right turn lane, for example, or at least the the intersection alignment in conjunction with the completion of the DAKOVA. But what more we're able to to get done in this year's budget year might depend on what the costs and the recommendations that come forward from the, from the detailed design.
Okay, thank you. New tax rates for 2016, when, when do you think those will be decided?
They were, the readings were given tonight and on May 2nd, those will be approved by council.
The development permit area tickets, when will the fine amounts be known? How much are they and do we know them now?
They're $100, they're on the, on the bylaw, on the agenda.
And I had a question, your worship, and maybe you can answer this now or maybe not. I'm just wondering, it came to my attention in other board meetings and council meetings that public questions are not part of the televised part of the the meetings, when folks go to watch the televised parts. I'm just wondering if the cities, if my questions, for example, or any others from from public are part of the the streaming?
I believe they are.
They are, okay, thank you, because they, for example, are not, as far as I'm told, for the CVRD, for example. And I don't think they are for North Cowichan, but I have to check.
I can't comment on other people's procedure. We include those things in, in.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if Shaw broadcasts them. I mean, they may edit them and I'm not sure what the outcome is, but it is, it is recorded here.
Thank you.
Ms. Robson?
I just want to clarify that although this, it is part of the meeting, the questions and answers are not included in part of the minutes. It just indicates that there was an opportunity to ask questions.
But what I'm saying right now is not gonna be.
It's not recorded in the minutes.
It's recorded in the live streaming.
But not in the minutes?
Not in the minutes. No, we don't, we don't record debate either. It's a motion, they're motion-driven minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there, it's not best practice to have verbatim minutes where you actually record what, it's not like court proceeding where a court clerk, you know, measures everything that was said at the meeting, that is, decisions are important with respect to to it and how council decides to make decisions is part of the preamble, but the decision is still a decision, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so a motion to, to go, result to go into closed meeting, this meeting be closed to the public under the following section of the Charter, 91G litigation or potential litigation affecting municipality. So move, mover and seconded? All in favor? Opposed and a motion to adjourn?
I will.
Okay, Counsel Duncan, seconded? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, so we will recess just for two minutes to clear the room and maybe you want a pee break?
Do it next. Do you don't forget this?